That's the really good job that I think we didn't see was, you know.
Yeah.
But I said, oh, she gets so calm down there, she gets accepted and she was one down that. And we'll have plenty of opportunity to go see it. So she knows that UCLA is a far stretch. She has all the qualifications. So many people don't understand. You have to do this. It's not a P R. So she knows how to do it. She's a great employee. Yeah. And that's it for today. Thank you for your wonderful presentation. Yeah, yeah, yeah. On Sunday.
Oh.
It's all of them hopefully.
There's a lot of solid.
Yeah, that's good. That's good. Good, that's great. Keep the tone going. No, that's great.
Thank you.
We got a big news audition. Like that. A person auditioned for acceptance of some top songs. Some songs.
Yeah.
All right. She has. Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Oh, I got, I got, I got the flag down here on this. Here you go.
He plays guitar with us. I'm like, I'm gonna listen to his side. Yeah. Yes, exactly. But she was in the other first. And then. She is a climate teacher. She did. But she's very. So that was, she did say that she was scared. She couldn't believe it. He's just like, yeah. He sure he doesn't just come up. And there may be others. You know. Feel better, look better. So I think they're just skipping it. I don't think it's safe to do this. So the person who's, she looks at that. What you have going and everything, you kind of see where, you know, what you could qualify for. And she had mentioned too, that you, the candidates, you really qualify for plenty of other places.
How you doing? Good, lovely.
Maybe you'll see the bottom of those. Like sort of as that.
Hello.
After I follow my. She didn't think you really need to.
Are you at the back of the.
So we'll see.
So it appears, it appears to be nine-ish.
Yeah.
Nine o'clock, so they can take our seats. Bobby, Richard. Bobby. Bobby. Hello. Hello.
Yeah, breaks it.
Yes, of course.
Did you play your chips?
I know. Okay. It is after nine. It is the Tuesday of October, I think it's the 12th. This is a official special council meeting to discuss strategic priorities. Chip. Do we want to do a roll call? We're gonna be that formal and master optional. So. Okay, Ashley, you want to do a roll call? Where are you?
Right here. Ready? Councilmember Baron.
Here.
Councilmember Felido.
Here.
Mayor, Councilmember Tice. Here. Mayor Pro Tem Richards.
Here.
Mayor Potter.
Yeah.
All are present.
All righty. Chip, floor is yours.
We are.
And sound crew, thank you so much. Sebastian and Joel taking care of our, of all our needs. We're also, we are on a Zoom platform live, so we're actually now broadcasting and this is recorded. You know, for all the millions of viewers that can't watch it live today, they can watch it, you know, their evenings. And the like. So, um, thank you. Thank you, council members. The first thing I want to do is make sure that we recognize Chief Euler. Chief, this is his, I think, thank you for coming back on your third day or fourth day. So. Have all of the council members met, Chief Euler? Maybe we could go down the line, please, sitting with Councilmember Tice, just introduce yourselves real quickly.
Good morning.
Councilmember Tice, Councilmember Baron, Mayor Potter, Councilmember Felido, Councilmember Richards. So, thank you. And when we have breakouts, you'll have the chance to clump elbows with the chief. Yeah. And we've got two members of the public. Of course, this is a public meeting. We've got limited seating, but we have Nancy Toomey from, from across the street and from the Karma Residents Association. And then Citizen of the Year Dale Byrne. Thank you for coming, sir. Pretty exciting meeting today. You know, we created a lot of priorities when we were in the, in the throes of the pandemic last May. We queued this up a couple of months ago for your consideration and the consensus on the council was that we needed to come and meet in this kind of a format to really, to really get through these priorities and help structure them so, so we can address them. That said, there are no bad ideas on this list. There really aren't. There are things that are in progress. There are things that we'd love to do, but don't have the capacity to do right now. Some other good news, I think I've told some of you at our update. Brandon and Maxine have hired the assistant planner, so he is gonna be here two weeks from yesterday. So we have a new planner. The project manager is posted and we've gotten applications for a lot of positions. Ashley, I think, selected four library employees. So again, we're filling our ranks, but it does take, does take a little bit of time. That said, it's really important that we think about our capacity when we talk about the priorities as we prioritize them. So part of the discussion with a couple of, a couple of you, Councilmember Richards came up with a matrix, decision-making matrix. And then Councilmember Tyson and I, I talked about what some of the factors might be that you can use to help prioritize these projects. And of course, what you have before you is the executive team's priorities, not just where we think they fit, you know, one to four scale. One being a real immediate priority, a four being something that we, we, we can or we should wait on. But also the amount of effort that's gonna go into them to, to take them on. So again, if you see the priority ones, if you see, you know, three quarters of them on Brandon's, in Brandon's shop, well, that's gonna obviously have significant capacity constraints on current planning. You know, the processing of signs and second story additions and tree removals and all those other kinds of things that community planning and building reviews on a regular basis. So again, these are more advanced planning topics. They're not to be confused with the daily operation of the city, community policing, responding to PRAs, taking care of, you know, the roads and the trees and the everything else, responding to applicants, balancing the books, et cetera. So again, we need to make sure that we measure these advanced topics, these priority areas against our day-to-day operations. So what we did was we created this green sheet where your mind happens to be blue because we want to waste any more paper. See how efficient we are? We don't waste money and paper. Yours is green, but on the green sheet, it has a series, it has the, the item number that's synonymous with the big matrix that you see on the screen here. And. We're gonna pass those out to Dale and Nancy as well. And some of the factors that we thought about to help evaluate how to prioritize these goals and projects would be essential public safety. Something that revenue generates revenue, something that's routine in nature. You know, there's one on here, filling positions. Well, clearly, we're gonna try to continue to fill positions. Level of completeness. Obviously, it probably wouldn't make sense to stop something we've been working on for over a year. Regardless of how you feel about our, our climate action work, I mean, we're, we're, we're over halfway done with it. I mean, you know, we are, we're on a timeline to complete that. So would it be a good idea to stop that or any other kind of a project that's, that's currently under, under review? Outside funding available, and we've got several projects, of course, that we have grant funding. We have in the police department, we have the antenna for the, for the antenna, the HUASI grant. In planning, we have three housing grants for a whole lot of money to look at barriers to providing affordable housing. In Bob Shop, we have stream bed restoration for a hundred and.
One eighty.
One hundred and eighty thousand dollars as well as a fuel load reduction. So clearly, those should be a priority so that we can get the money from those, those agencies. So again, that could be a factor. And what we envision is you perhaps using the green sheet as a worksheet by which to, you know, create notes on there. You take it home with you. We're not gonna keep it, but hopefully it'll help educate both your discussion and, and help you prioritize the projects on the bigger sheet, which again, we'll, we'll post up here and I'll tell you about that in a minute. Village, village character management, essential maintenance, state law requirement. And someone asked me about why we have that accessory dwelling unit ordinance on there. Well, if we don't draft our own ADU ordinance, then we have to follow the state rules. So clearly, any kind of a unfunded state or federal mandate or things that we need to make sure we address so we can put our own, our own fingerprints on them, like 1383 last week, obviously, with the food waste. And then we created two columns in the end. Maybe there are other factors that the council or the executive team would like to add to help evaluate the project. So we'll start off with that. And then what we'll do is we can go through each of these priority areas and then what Brandon again created, and thank you, Brandon, for, that's his great sheets. This is a dynamic spreadsheet. So again, we want to do an example. So if, if Mr. Baron says develop a long, a multi-pronged financial strategy to rest pension liability, and we're pretty far down that road, right? If he evaluates that as a number one, and Councilmember Felido says, that's not important, I'll give it a four. And Mayor Potter says, that's a, that's a two. And Mr. Richards says, oh, that's a one. I've always said that. And Councilmember Ty says it's a one. You'll see that it's dynamic and it's, it's averaging your scores. And so if you went through that, and again, there's, nothing's cut in stone here. If you like that approach, what we'll do is we'll reorganize the sheet at break or every hour or something, and you'll see which ones move to the top of the, the priority list. So again, that's the method, that's a methodology that we could use to evaluate the priorities. So. Yeah. What do you, what do you think? I mean, that's, oh, I'm sorry, one more thing. You are gonna hear an unfortunate word today a couple of times. You're gonna hear no. There's, we just don't have the capacity to address all of these things. And so we're gonna do it gently and kindly and professionally, obviously. But some of the projects that are near and dear to my heart are gonna have to slip, and it's probably gonna happen across the board a little bit. So we're trying to get consensus. We're trying to do as much as possible for the village, but there will be some things that have to slip. So again, those are our, our, that's the process we're proposing to go through. That's the process that the sheet, the, the ranking sheet with the factors or findings are something that we're suggesting that you could use to evaluate each of the priorities and, and get, get a list that are really the, the essential priorities for this year or the next eighteen months. And then we'll go from there. We'll do this again in six months or what have you. I'm sorry, Mrs. Felido.
Yes. I'm, I'm just wondering, since we don't actually have an agenda, how is the public going to be heard on these items? Are we going to take public comments at various times through the morning or just all at once? I think it would be good if the public knew how to interact with us.
Well, that's a great one. So again, my suggestion or our suggestion is to go through each of these one at a time. And again, it's, you know, I think it'll be slow at first, but I think we'll gain some momentum. But going through each of them and, you know, doing some kind of an evaluation criteria. And maybe Mayor Potter, we could, we could, you know, briefly go to the, to the public on every one or every other one to, to get, to get feedback. Or we could open up for the public at this point in time and say, what are your priorities? What do you think are the most important things on this list? And this is a published list. This was, you know, part of, this was the packet, if you will, that we published for the, again, the next year, eighteen months for the village. What do you, what do you think about that, Councilmember? Would that be a good approach, you think?
Well, I'll defer to the mayor, how he wants to handle that, but I do think there should be a process.
So there, that was my question. I had my hand up also, that what we're gonna do about public comment, it seems it could be a little bit boring if we went on each and every topic. What I was thinking maybe was we go out to the public now and get the comment then. And then if there was something that we specifically wanted input from the public on an item, we could go ahead and ask that. What do you think was the council's draw there? Any objections?
Jeff. Yeah, I am. You know, one of the things I found frustrating about the list was that it's so long. And one of the things that I think might make this, you know, you know, some of the things, the things that are on the capital improvement project budget, you know, that the council has already allocated money for, those, it seems like those are at the top of the list. I mean, we had a discussion about those items. You know, we've allocated money. We, we've, you know, we've green lighted these projects and I know all of them aren't going. But I don't have a lot of interest in, you know, and I certainly, I can't speak for everybody. I don't have a lot of interest in having that same discussion over and over again. So that's one set of items which we might just take out, put at the top of the list and be done with it. The other thing is some of the items on the list I thought were sort of routine, you know, routine items that staff just does. And hiring thing, hiring people, you know, managing volunteers, paving the roads. Like I don't, I feel like when we talk about these things all the time, when the council talks about these things as priorities, we lose the, we, you know, we lose the forest for the trees, you know? And I know, Chip, you and I talk a lot about what the difference between a policy is, you know? The council makes policies and you run the city. And some of these things are running the city. And I'm not sure that I'm particularly comfortable, you know, I don't want to tell you how to run the city. I want you to just run the city. And so I'm not sure that we should necessarily have, like, I'm looking at the thing, I'm looking at number twenty-one, janitorial RFP contract. Like, I understand that that's a big deal, but that's running the city. And, you know, you have, you have a financial analyst here, Sharon, who's very good at her job. And that, to me, seems just routine. And I wonder if we should take out the routine items as well so that, you know, we get to the things that, you know, we all care about, whether it's, you know, the parking garage or Karen's master plan for downtown. Like, that's where we, you know, that's where I feel like the council has a lot of things to say and a lot of prioritization to make. So some of the things have already been decided. Some of the things are routine, and I think what's left is, you know, is really the meat, which should be, you know, the meat of the discussion, you know, for the, for the ten of us in this room, fifteen of us in the room to hash out.
If I may, Mr. Baron, thank you. I think, I think, I don't disagree with you at all. When, when we did this in May, remember, we did have, we, we talked about the capital project, the capital budget, but we hadn't adopted anything yet. So both of these are reminders that, that, that we, we established just a threshold above which some of these items take some, some serious capacity. The janitorial RFP, again, it's not just, it's, 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 it's a little bit intensive. An example would be, you know, at-home letter delivery. So we spent, Sharon, now we, Sharon has spent probably a few hundred hours receiving calls from people. And I didn't expect that it was gonna be so intensive. And, and that basically cut off her ability to jump on to other, to other items as well. So some of the things we put up here are an effort to ensure that we know that they're gonna take some capacity. And we can't overload the plate because those routine in nature things, which is, which is a factor we created on this, on the green sheet matrix, are, are, are influencing, they impact our workload, our day-to-day workload. So I don't disagree with you. You know, we can do that and I certainly agree with you from the perspective that the capital projects have to move to the head of the, head of the, head of the line. But again, until we get the project manager, we're, we're kind of stuck. You know, we, we can't, we can't, we can't move ahead, but that's, that's proceeding. We'll, we'll get there.
If I may answer or make some comments about Councilman Baron's questions. For capital projects, I'm the biggest fan of getting all of them to a priority one and doing them. They're already been budgeted, they're been debated, all that kind of stuff is great. We don't have a project manager today. Once that person comes up, you know, is hired and gets up to speed, that person, a good project manager can manage about seven projects at a time. I think we have more than like fourteen. So one person over the next two years. Maybe, maybe we get this, this plate of, of projects done and then, you know, next summer, why add more projects to it? So it's not a matter of putting them to the top and then just having one project manager polish them off in a year. It's not that simple. Same thing with like routine paving. That's a big project. That's a lot of time and effort to get that project out, you know, out to bid. It's closed, but it's stuck. It's stuck right now. And another comment was the janitorial RFP. I'll, I'll confess, we went to council a few months ago and said, hey, extend the one we, the contract we have with your serve six months because we don't have time to, to update the RFP and go out. It's, it's a relatively big process. I'll be honest, I haven't touched it in six months. So I'm gonna go back to council in December and say, hey, give me six more months because that's the only thing I can do. I don't even have time to write that staff report, let alone do the RFP. So we're just, at least I am, I can't speak to everybody. We are completely saturated with work today and comments like the CIP will just happen by itself. And that's kind of part of the reasons we're all here is to all get a better awareness of what it's gonna take to get these things done. It doesn't happen by itself.
Well, I'm sorry if I made the comment or insinuated that I thought the CIP was gonna happen by itself because I certainly didn't say that.
True.
But in, you know, in fairness, you know, the, the CIP has been the CIP now for, we're in the July, August, September, October. We're three and a half months into the fiscal year. And, and so we're four and a half months in from when we thought the CIP was going to, you know, when we had sort of finished the CIP. So I think you'll have to be patient with us or with me. I would certainly never speak for my, for my, my fellow council members. That is a little frustrating to hear that, you know, in four and a half months or five and a half months or six and a half months, however long, we, you know, we've talked about hiring this project manager, that we don't have a project manager yet. And so I think that's a lot of, I think, you know, when we go through this stuff this morning, you'll certainly hear from me a lot of frustration about the fact that that project isn't filled. I know there's a project manager and planning that's not filled as well. So I would ask you, I would ask staff to be patient with us as you hear us, you know, express frustration that, you know, it doesn't seem like we've made very much progress in the, in the three and a half months since the beginning of the fiscal year.
I would, I would, yes, sir, maybe we haven't made progress in the CIP, but in other areas, some of which are up here, we have made, you know, great progress, right? I mean, we have, you know, City Hall is open, all our facilities are open, the library with the skeletal crew is open and we're, you know, every, again, that's why I say every one of these projects is a good one, and they all have an advocacy group in the community. And so what we've done is we've tried to respond to your, you know, to, to a variety of factors, right? Your passion, where you think that we should be putting our, our time capital against state and state and federal mandates. We've had to respond to that. Where would the opportunity get grant funding? And then all the things that happened, you know, again, dealing with the pandemic, dealing with a gnarly fire season, dealing with, again, patrons who want to be in this building or that building or what have you. So we've tried to be nimble, but again, that's, that's really, that's the purpose of this. So, and you did not say, I didn't, I didn't take any offense typically with, with adequate staffing. The capital, the capital, you know, we would have started on July first or before. And we, and actually, we started the recruiting even before you approved the budget. We tuned up the job description, some of which we're still dealing with, with our, with organized labor. We tried to buy the, the police cars, you know, early, but again, we ran into a problem there. So there's a lot of things that are outside our control, but no, I, I think you're in a trend.
Yes, I share Councilmember Baron's frustration here. And I don't particularly want to go back over the things we already decided during the budget period that were important. I think that that's taking up a lot of space on my sheets here. We want those things done. I think the elephant in the room is why haven't we hired all these twelve positions or whatever it is? We have money now. We have the ability to do this. We are not in the position of cutting positions anymore. And I, you know, it's, it's time to inform us and the public of what's going on in the hiring process so that we can get these things done. And really, I, you know, I think what Councilmember Baron said was right on as far as not going over and over and over, reprioritizing the things we already put in the budget.
Yes, sir. So if I may, we wanted to make sure that, again, there were, there were priority projects on this list, so we saw the full universe. So you, I mean, clearly, we're gonna implement the capital projects. You funded them, you know, why, why aren't we gonna build them? We took a whole year off because of the pandemic. And we had, before that, we had a lot of great progress. We had really been doing a lot of good things. So we just wanted to make sure you saw that, again, there is a capacity requirement to implement those, those capital projects. So Maxine, we've filled, we've filled a litany of positions already. As I've, as I've preached, we don't just hire anyone and, you know, Chief Euler is a prime example. I mean, thank goodness we found him, quite frankly, and thank goodness he wanted to join us. But, you know, we, we do not hire just anyone off the street. And, you know, Mr. Baron and I have talked about this a lot. When I talk about fit, it's not a guy, you know, you know, a chubby boy. it's not a guy, you know, uh, you know, a chubby bald guy that I'm, that I'm looking to, to fill that, that, that's the mirror image of me. No, I, they need to understand our ethics. They understand our character. They need to understand our, our customer service, uh, uh, platform. So again, we go through a very rigorous process, uh, to hire the right employee. And again, we filled, uh, we filled at least a half dozen positions or more, eight or nine at this point in time. So, so they're, they're filling them. So I'm, I'm sorry.
Okay. So why don't we start this discussion with each department head clarifying what their staffing levels are and how many people they need to be fully staffed? And what the plan is to, to staff.
Question number nineteen.
What?
Question number nineteen is what we should focus on.
Uh, we need, the public needs to know, the council needs to know, you know, for Bob to fully run his department, how many positions does he need to fill? And if he has a wish list of positions.
Well, I definitely want to differentiate between what we budgeted and what we funded and the wish list.
Right.
Because again, and without, without belongings, you know, you know, anything, um, as I've told you at our individual updates, I will be returning to you with a staffing enhancement. And again, it's not going to be, you know, thirty positions or twenty-five positions, but again, we need, we need, we need some positions to be added. And as Councilmember Felita correctly identifies, we're, we're okay financially right now. And again, I've spoken with Sharon and Robin, and we, we have the funds. So it's a matter of you approving those and, and, and then recruiting for them. So that's, that's a fine approach if, if, uh, uh, my, my suggestion is.
Karen, did you answer yours? You get your question answered?
Well, uh, my question's, well, no, my question's not answered. I want to know each department, what, are they fully staffed? And if they're not, how many positions are they looking to fill based on the budget? And then, in order to do some of these projects, as we go along, we need to know, is there more staffing that needs to take place?
So I, I'd support that suggestion as far as process goes. Bobby, did you have some questions?
Well, I just a quick question is, is there anything on the fifty-eight items that hasn't been touched? There are some items that haven't been touched.
Yes, sir.
Absolutely.
Do we know then?
I mean, we, yes, we, we could go through them, Councilmember.
Do you guys, my colleagues, do you guys know what hasn't been touched at all?
Well, it says some of them under current status.
Saying no progress.
Say no progress.
Ones with down to number four.
Um, you know, there, there, there are some things that we've touched. I would say there's no progress kind of currently. So kind of in the middle of the pack there, uh, facilities maintenance plan. I mean, again, Bob and I have been talking about that for years.
So like the on-call tree and landscape business, that's hasn't been touched?
Uh, no, well, we, we've done that before. We just took a year off and we cut the budget. So I wouldn't say there's no progress on that one at all. That, that would not be.
Then I, I'd say that's where I'm confused, because like something like that.
Yeah, yeah. I think there's, there's, there's no progress in, in, uh, rehiring, uh, of a forest manager, contract force manager, or, or landscape manager.
So trying to get this off the dime here. So, um, my thought is, I do support what Karen said as far as process goes for it. How's the rest of council feel about that? Getting north, south, and the heads.
That would be just doing number nineteen first.
Yep. And then I take public comment on that item before we go ahead and start discussing with staff. What is, would you agree?
Yeah, I have one comment. Is there any way that the department heads could also maybe indicate if there is some short-term answer to hiring a full-time employee by letting some contracts, short-term contracts to fill in those gaps? It would be very helpful to me as a councilperson to know if they think that that is something that could help us get going before we actually get through the whole hiring process. So I'd like that kind of input as well as possible.
Okay, so I think we've got consensus where we're going to public comment opportunity for any member of the public to speak on this item. There will not be a timeline today, however. So if you feel like you want to be excessively verbose, I may cut you off, but let's start, in, in the world of discussion, we won't put a timeline on it. So is there anybody wishing to say anything at this time? Either one of you. Dale, you're moving.
In regards to the subject, which is.
Which is going to be the positions, filling positions, number nineteen, and also input from the department heads. As to what their needs are.
Thank, thank you for speaking in the microphone. You're a good example for the rest of you. Please speak in your microphones, uh, as, as clearly as possible.
I agree with council. Is this on? Yeah. I agree with the councilperson, Baron and Karen. The comments were great. Um, I think it's important to be creative at this point, because to not have paving projects going on and so on, when we have good weather and you know, we're going to be in the middle of winter soon. So I think that, that the idea of using contractors, but also to, to take a look around the community, we have a lot of really good people that are willing to help out. I think our organization is one of them. And I think, don't be afraid to reach out and ask people and challenge us to, to take up some of the slack in areas where we can without having to get into the details of, you know, running the city, because I think they're out there. And that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dale.
So Nancy Toomey, speaking as a resident, would like to know where there are job openings, because when I go up to the city website, there seems to be only two or three positions that are posted, um, so that if that could be more public, uh, maybe some of us have friends or connections in other places that we could provide recommendations and point people that we know to those positions uh, that are really good thumbs-up candidates. So if that could be more public on the website, or tell us where we can get that, i- if it's not on the city's website, that would be a big help. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Is anybody else here today?
All right. Do we have anybody, uh, anybody online? Thank you, thank you. And if I may, Mr. Mayor, uh, so, um, Mr. Byrne, thank you, and I thank you for everything Carmel cares does. Um, uh, Bob spoke very eloquently, and the mayor and Congressman Panetta, uh, I, I tried to be, uh.
You did a good job, Dylan.
Thanks. I, I, uh, thank you for everything Carmel cares does. We, we do need to be careful. There are, are laws that regulate, um, using, you know, volunteer groups, um, where you have something done by a, by a organized labor employee. So we're, we're very conscious of that, but thank you so much for everything you do, and what we, you know, we're trying to, I know that you and Bob meet on a regular basis, and what is it? Uh, Bob says no, and you hear that as on, right? So it's a, it's a phonetic thing. Um, and then, um, Ms. Toomey, yeah, so we do, we do, we celebrate the job openings um, in the Friday Letter, and they're on the website. But again, we, we, yeah, we, we do, we do a handful. We kind of batch them at a time, so. Uh, Mr. Mayor, as we go around the room, my suggestion is that we start with, um, with Maxine uh, to kind of tell us a little bit about what, you know, if you've got the data about what we, what we have filled max and what we have outstanding, what we've got posted or something like that, because you may have that in one, in one place.
That'd be fine with me. Also, this is not intended to be a staff bashing exercise. This is actually supposed to be a productive team working effort. Amongst all of us, we're all in the public service sector here, but I think we all share the same frustration, whether you're a department head or whether you're an elected, you do want to get out there, do the best job you can. So we're here to give you the resources that we can financially and politically if need be. So Maxine?
Thank you, Baron. Thank you.
Okay, um, so feel free to ask questions as I go, because I know I, I'll try to talk slowly. Uh, so let me just give you an overview. Right now, we have fourteen vacancies. Um, pre-July one, we were working with, already starting to recruit for a lot of the public safety positions that had been purposely, um, frozen due to COVID and everything. When we were looking at fiscal, being fiscally responsible, so we actually started those, I want to say January of this year. We were already going, uh, pre, I call our operating budget, adopted budget cycle. What I will say is for public safety positions, it is a very, very long, um, there is a lot of process that goes into our public safety positions. So, for example, we do have the firefighter, paramedic, starting, uh, middle of this month. But I can tell you that individual was probably delayed six to eight weeks with certain backgrounds, certain medical. Um, just as we're talking today, a lot of our vendors are backed up. Um, in order to get even Chief Euler here, we had to ask a lot of favors, which means other things got delayed. So it's kind of a domino effect in certain areas of recruitment, where our vendors are also backed up. Um, so I'll just kind of give you that framework. I have talked to other, uh, recruitment firms, and they are also backed up. Um, I have had some executive recruiters actually turn down work because they're at capacity. So right now, just in general.
Let me rephrase that. So again, Chief Euler is going to be with us, but we, we're going to replace Chief Tomasi on a full-time basis. So we asked for recruiting firms, executive recruiting firms. Uh, one of them lost our request for a proposal. One, uh, one sent a proposal in, and two said they're, they're out of capacity. So we, we went one for three on, on requests to help. And this is not, it's not free. I mean, they charge, they're going to charge me a lot of money to find Chief Tomasi's replacement. I'm sorry, thank you.
So just in general, when I'm, you know, in general, right now, recruitments are the number one priority for every organization with, you know, COVID, a lot of positions were, um, unfunded, and right now, they're doing the same thing that we're doing. We're, we're restored positions, and then we started to fund up positions July one. So, um, it is a very competitive pool with a lot of organizations. Um, what I can tell you is that there are, you know, we're getting anywhere from five hundred to eight hundred to a thousand hits on our job posting, so that is not the issue. Um, we might only get five applicants who apply, even though a thousand people have seen it. Uh, it's just, right now, those are kind of, I, those are the statistics that we're working with. Um, so just in general, and I'll let.
Let me, let me jump in one more time. So I think I told you, council, in our individual updates, that Maxine and I looked from the South Bay, South San Francisco Bay, through Monterey County, there are over five hundred jobs available in local government, just local government, not state government. I guess those are counties too. There's only a couple of counties in between, right? So county and cities, five hundred jobs, and as we've discussed, um, we are now competing financially with the pay of, of the Bay Area. So again, that's why we're not getting as many applicants as we would have, uh, several years ago. Sorry.
And, um, just to kind of go back to the comment about where do we put, um, our, I call, our job posting. So it is on our front page, and there is a, basically, there's a dropdown that says, I want to apply for a job, um, which is on our front page of the city website, and those are always, I call, every position that we have open and active um, is on there. And so, for example, this morning, we have five. And so if you just go on our front page, it says, I want to, um, apply for a job, you'll see the active, um, positions that we're currently recruiting.
What are those five? Can you read those five to us?
Police officer, lateral, project manager, temporarily library assistant, temporarily library one, and tree care specialist are current. So it's only going to show the actives, and, um, a majority of our recruitments, they do close within two to three weeks. So if you're looking at them at different times on our website, they will appear, and then they won't appear because they've closed, and we're going through the recruitment process. So you will see a different, I call, phases, different positions constantly showing up on the website. So I just want to kind of put that out. If anyone's looking, we also like, uh, Chip indicated. We do, when we post them, we add that to the Friday Letter for that upcoming Friday Letter, um, along with all the different job boards that we put it on. So that's how, um, for our positions, that we're putting them out there. So currently, and I will also let the department heads kind of interject, because I don't have my list in front of me, but I, I think what Carrie's asking is, based on what's budgeted, what positions are vacant and what are we recruiting for, if I'm hearing that correctly? Okay. So I will start, and please, again, department heads, please jump in, because I don't have my official list in front of me. So I'm doing this kind of on the spot. So for in admin, we do have the city clerk, and, um, that was slated, uh, for an executive recruitment, and that was, um, because we did have an employee voluntary leave recently. So we do have the city clerk that is a vacant position. We have a half-time finance specialist, um, in finance, and that is hoping to go up, I call, this month, next month. That was.
On the wish list, Councilmember Tice, I've, I've talked to finance and what we'd like, what I'm going to approach you, and again, this is not a decision-making, but I'd like to make that, we'd like to make that a full-time equivalent. And there's some, we'll, we'll give a little, and we'll ask for a little bit as well. So, sorry, Max. And, and I'll, I'll, I'll seed the conversation, because I have a list here. Library, finance, public works, community activities, landscape contractor, country contractors, I'll, 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 I'll help out, or I'll try to help out.
So, um, that's what's budgeted, and that's what's vacant. So those are the ones in admin that are vacant, budgeted vacant. Community activities, I do not show any, sorry.
So we have, uh, a city clerk and a half-time specialist.
Correct.
All right. And you want to make that half-time specialist full-time, so maybe Sharon doesn't have to worry about all these phone calls about mail delivery. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, ma'am. The vision would be to create a full-time finance specialist position so that we could, so that Sharon, you know, you, you know, it's some, they need help. And that's the punchline. You know, having, uh, you know, having Robin, uh, Robin does a little, uh, does everything, but having someone that can do the payroll instead of Robin, so Robin can work on some more, you know, more, more significant, without any judgment, significant, uh, issues in finance.
How many?
Yes, sir.
How many of the fourteen positions are in public safety?
Uh, we have three.
Is that with the chief?
And just so you know, it's because I know I have different people, different, I call, in the recruitment process. I'm not counting them if I have people in the pipeline. So without going into too much detail, but just so you know, that's how I'm giving you these numbers. If I have people in the pipeline, then I'm, I'm hoping that we're going to get a candidate out of it. So, um, that's how.
Well, is the total of it, like, you said we have fourteen vacancies. So of those, of those fourteen vacancies, three of them are in public safety?
Correct.
Okay. So one of them may be advertised, and one may be in the pipeline, and one may be ever starting to be advertised next month, or something like that.
When I call vacancies, that means we have nobody, it's, it's, we haven't, I call, touched it. There's no.
But yes, sir, there's, it's somewhere in the recruitment process. So again, when Chief Tomasi told me that he was retiring, we strategized about how to fill both his position on interim basis with someone like Chief Euler. And we looked at how we were going to recruit. So that's, that's a very important executive position. We're not, we're not going to handle that recruitment in-house. That's why, again, we contacted the executive recruiting firm immediately to get them on board.
So to use your example, last week you hired a police officer, right? Or a couple of weeks ago, you hired a police officer. Before, if I'd asked you this question four weeks ago, the answer would have been four, and then the number went down to three after the police officer was hired.
Correct.
So how many, for example, how many police officers are left to hire other than the chief?
So I look at it, sorry, we're kind of talking the same thing, but the way I, I call it, for safety, I do sworn and non-s sworn. So sworn, if you're asking about sworn, there's three positions. There's the police chief, there's a police commander, and then there's a police officer.
A total of about twenty-six positions in that department.
There are.
I thought that's, yeah.
Uh, twenty-three. Twenty-three positions.
Split about evenly between sworn and non-s sworn. So Max, why don't we go to the next, what's the next department you have?
So next is community activities. And I don't show any vacancies in community activities.
No, we were uncertain as to where COVID was going to take us, having canceled all of the events last year. So we've just tried to scale and minimize things for this year, but we certainly need somebody for community activities.
And, and as, on the wish list part of it, if I may, real quickly, Councilmember.
I didn't hear that.
Oh, can you, can you?
Sorry. Thank you. Um, so we, uh, during the budget process, having canceled all of the special events, um, in the prior year, um, and trying to see what the state was going to do in terms of legislating how we handle special events. Um, didn't budget for a full-time community activities person this year. Um, but that would definitely be a wish list, because we've tried to scale the events, and we had to cancel the pumpkin roll, because that was too much for, for us to handle with everything else. And, um, extra help in community activities is, is really needed.
And let's also not forget that Ashley is doing two jobs now.
And let's also not forget that Ashley is doing two jobs now. So I think that there's some strain in that.
She's doing three, really.
Three, actually. Yeah, you're right.
Yeah, community activities, library and clerk. And then the wishlist, I want to reinforce the wish wishlist because pre-pandemic, I was anticipating carving off the private, the private events from Ashley's role, something she and I have been talking about for years. Several of you and I have been talking about during our individual updates and creating a separate position and housing it in the police department. Because it's so police, uh, uh, public safety oriented, whether it be the car week events or, you know, again, the private events. We would, we would retain in, in the library and community activities director position. The, the community public events like, you know, Veterans Day and Memorial Day and, and our parade and, and those kinds of things that we traditionally put on ourselves, the holiday tree lighting, et cetera. So anyway, the wishlist would be a, a separate, not, it'd be probably be a managed, I'm sorry, a supervisory position, Councilmember. It would not be a management position. It would work, uh, repeat as a non, uh, report as a non-sworn position to the police chief. I'm sorry, ma'am.
And so all the librarians have been re, all the positions that were cut during COVID have been rehired?
No, Councilmembers. So I requested with the budget this last year, the return of half of the staff, not knowing what other departments were going to be requesting and trying to strike a balance between that and my colleagues, making sure we all got some help that we needed, not knowing that we were going to see, you know, this great increase in like TOT and that it would have been possible to refund the whole staff. So what we are looking at recruiting for at this moment in time is what I requested in the budget, which is two part-time library assistants, two part-time librarians, full-time librarian two, and a full-time librarian one. So that's what's in the pipeline now. Prior to the pandemic, the library was open over 90 hours, service hours between both buildings per week. Were unique in that, well, actually I think we're probably closest in terms of scheduling to the police department because it's complicated with our schedule to cover lunch breaks, somebody's out sick, someone's on vacation. And now you don't have enough bodies in the building and it becomes a safety issue when you're one or two staff, never one, but it, it is complicated to do. So to get back to that, I would be asking on, at a wishlist level, the 13-plus FTEs that I had prior to the pandemic, to restore those hours that we had 10 to six Monday through Friday in both buildings, 12 to four on Saturdays at the Park Branch Kids Library and 12 to four Saturday and Sunday at the main, which our patrons were happy with. We had just completed a survey of hours and stabilized them. So it wasn't confusing. Currently we're open 18 service hours a week between both buildings.
So one of the, uh, one of the documents that, that is a touchdown for me regarding library is the agreement, the MOU agreement we have, you have, the council has with library board that identifies the positions. Ashley and I are looking at that and I'd like her to, what we're doing is to say, is that the right staffing? It's, it's, it's an older document at this point in time and we just haven't spent the time with it. But as I told you, I get individual updates, I, I would like to, to add funding back in to, to refill the library positions that we cut during, during the pandemic. Maxie, what's, yes, ma'am.
Are you on a microphone?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm having a little hard time.
I'm sorry, I'll, I'll, I'll speak up. It's, it's me. Yeah, I'm, I'm like, I'm like Madonna wired up here. Yeah, it's.
So originally, originally you were at about 16.9 positions, I think. You cut it to nine, you backfilled it down to 12. Is that what I'm hearing?
So no, uh, pre-pandemic, we are at over 13 FTE. I think we're at 13.98. We had some vacancies prior to the, the start of the pandemic, part-time vacancies. And so I'd just like to restore us back to what we were pre-pandemic. As Chip said, we are looking at the MOU and the identified positions that the city will fund. I would like to do a little juggling there, but same amount of service hours and the same amount of staff will be needed to keep our buildings open. But just some different positions and switching things around.
This gives you this budget relook, gives you an opportunity to reorganize the department for efficiency's sake. Is that what I'm hearing?
That is what you're hearing.
Good. Okay.
What's the next department on your, on the budget, Max?
Community planning and building. So we have the associate planner that is vacant and that was a new position that was created on July 1st with the new budget. And then the building inspector is vacant due to a promotional opportunity. The employee being promoted to building official. So we have the building inspector opening. Is that?
And then we had an assistant planner who left after the budget was adopted and that position has been filled. And again, that gentleman starts two weeks from yesterday. In response to the, the use of contractors. So because we only have a building official, not a building inspector at this point in time, we are using a, a group to do plant, outside plan checks for us and do some code compliance work. Now, on your, on your November 2nd agenda, you'll see an agenda item to, uh, for additional code compliance work. So again, using contractors to help fill the void while we do the recruitments for the full-time positions. Any questions on community planning and building?
We'd like to hear.
Oh, sorry. What's on your, what's on your wishlist? Be careful. You're still on probation.
Thank you. I know. So, so Maxine's right. Our new planner starts on the 25th. That's exciting. As Chip said, we're currently using CSG for building plan inspection. There's some pros to that. It keeps things moving. They have some technical knowledge that we may not have in-house, but you lose a portion of your building permit revenue, which is, you know, something to consider. Uh, and they're not at an arm's length, so it can slow down the process a little bit. So we'll continue to use them until we get the inspector position. Talking about the planning side of the house, because there are planning consultants too, because that associate planner that we're talking about is really going to be one of the key people in getting some of this stuff done, the long-range stuff. I really don't recommend using a planning consultant for that work specifically to manage that. I've had experience with that and the time that it takes to get someone spun up, especially in a place as unique as Carmel by the Sea with coastal regulations and our own design guidelines and things like that. I think by the time we got somebody actually effective as a consultant, they would either switch consultants on us or we'll have somebody that can actually be in-house so we can spend the resources to train. We will use consultants for individual tasks being managed by the planning department, things like updating our historical context statement, doing the housing study, things like that. So we will use consultants, but that's programmed into the projects already. I guess if I had a wishlist, I haven't even run this by Chip yet, but we, what we've been doing in the department is we've been doing some cross-training within the boundaries of people's MOUs, but some cross-training, some, some cross-training so that, you know, for example, our, you know, our code compliance officer can help process, you know, simple sign permits. The planners, when they're out there doing a planning inspections, if there's a simple building inspection thing that we can check off the list. So we're maximizing the resources we have. So if I had a wishlist, I would ask for a sort of flex position between a, a code enforcement officer and a building inspector. So it'd be a dual purpose, one more employee. And I'm, I'm pretty comfortable with my staffing, my, and my colleagues need help in interim. But if, if we're talking big, long-term stuff, I'm a big fan of cross-training and multipurpose employees. So if I got one more position, it would be that sort of dual hat wearing code compliance inspector and building inspector where they can do things to supplement both Bo and Jermell's side of the house as well.
Sure. I'm, I'm very supportive of that wishlist person because I think over the last year and a half, as, as I walk around the village, there are a lot of code enforcement issues that you just can't catch right now with your present staffing. And there's a proliferation of DG in the public right of way. There's encroachments. There's a lot of things that, that we really do need to look at funding that position, I believe.
Now, I want to reinforce something the mayor said at their last council meeting. Again, when, when you hire, I mean, there, there's a, there's a good use for, for contractors and contracting firms. You don't build the loyalty of having a full-time staff member and loyalty to the enterprise or loyalty to the job. I mean, for, for, for contracting, having a relationship with the development community is so important because you build that rapport, you build that trust. So again, using contract planners would not be for our village, my, my, my choice either. But good answer. Are we all squared away on community planning and building?
No, no, yes. So Brandon, um, you know, just as we've got an interim police chief here who has experience in the field, it seems to me you might be able to find an interim building inspector for fieldwork. We did that over at the county, as you know, several times. John Villapondo came back over. So I was wondering if that's something you'd be looking at.
Uh, we, we could certainly look at that. I'm sure that that's a service that our current contract with CSG, there probably is, is some options to have some interim or acting, sort of building inspector positions, you know, working out of, out of the shop. Certainly something we can explore.
Yeah, I, I, we, we can certainly explore it. What, what I have found, again, because of the nuances of our village, that contract building work tends to be very rigid and not, with, with no disrespect, not as problem solving oriented as, as our own staff. But certainly, Mr. Mayor, we can look into it. We, we don't, we have not received complaints about our responsiveness. I don't believe, with the exception of the one we talked about yesterday, Councilmember Felido, which was a design issue, not a building issue on the building side, either with plan checks or inspections. But again, if you hear something, please, please tell us. We're here to try to improve our, improve our services. Yes, ma'am.
I think what Mayor Potter just said though is important. In a void, when you don't have enough inspectors or enough code enforcement officers, you get a lot of things that it's very hard to clean up. So I, I think, you know, it's very important to look at, I mean, Alpha Sula was an excellent employee and that was a contract, I believe, for years, wasn't it? And that helped to have that person in place until you find the ideal in-house person. Because there's, there's too many things slipping by in the void of not having that perfect person.
Well, we'll add to the list, Councilmember. Thank you. Thanks, yeah. What, what's the next department, Maxine?
Public Works.
Oh, gosh.
So. I know Bob definitely has a wishlist, but before we get to the wishlist, this is what, based on budgeted, what was adopted, budgeted positions, he's got one maintenance worker and that's, we hired a maintenance worker in July and soon thereafter, we lost that maintenance worker. So that's the maintenance worker we're filling right now. Project manager that was funded on July 1st is the second vacancy for public works. And then we do have an employee who gave notice, a tree care specialist. So we will have a tree care specialist vacancy. So those are the budgeted positions that are vacant.
What was this? I'm sorry, what was the second one?
Oh, project man.
Project manager. Thank you.
That's the capital, the capital project manager. So two labor, two, two folks in labor and one, which is an at-will position that would implement the capital, the capital projects.
The project manager, then Bob would be going ahead and taking care of overseeing publicly, the paving projects, along with any other capital and projects. So one person overseeing all of those projects.
They would oversee about 14 capital projects with the expectation of focusing on the seven that's, you know, manageable, at least initially.
I mean, by that question, Mr. Mayor, I mean, we, we, you know, we could add a one-year position to get caught up because we took a year off. We used to have two project manager positions, but we had Robert Estrella, who was our project manager. He was extremely, you know, excellent at his job. We cut the position, we cut the CIP during the pandemic.
Okay. I would like to hear Bob's wishlist because there is a lot of rumbling in the community about beautification, about signs that need painted, striping pavement. I mean, there's a lot of stuff that I think our residents would really value having be done. And I would really like to hear your wishlist.
Christmas is Bob's favorite holiday. So I'm, I'm interested too, Santa.
If I may, let me start a little bit of history before getting to the wishlist, little history. So when I started in June 2017, there was 21 positions in public works, 18 were filled, or 18 were funded and filled. There was three that were on the books, but not funded at the time. When COVID hit, we lost three positions. We went down to 15. The three positions was the project manager that we've been talking about, maintenance worker who came back and then left again. And the admin coordinator, of which is a quarterback. The coastal gardener position, when COVID hit, the coastal garden position was on the chopping block. But we decided to save a little bit of money and do landscape maintenance in-house instead of awarding a contract. So we inherited, you know, a large amount of work that we still have. Hopefully next budget year, we'll be able to farm that back out again and have a coastal gardener to do other things. But that, so in other words, we took on another task. Over the last several years on forestry, we used to have an assistant forester. Without getting, uh, having, uh, Maxine yell at me, it was, it was more of a performance problem than a workload problem. So that, that position was just unfunded. The new forester is absolutely dying, has up to 100 phone calls a day, cannot possibly, no human can keep up with the workload. Project manager, we have the one vacant. When I started, we had two contract project managers. It's hard today when we, we have, people have applied for the project manager. Only a handful, only a small percentage are qualified or well-qualified. So it's pretty hard finding a project manager today, like as it used to be in years past. So a wishlist would be having a second project manager or a engineering technician of some sort. Facility maintenance, when I started, we just had one person, facility maintenance. And I asked, when I met Cleve, I asked him where is his help? And he says he doesn't have any. So promptly we, we converted a senior maintenance position vacant from streets over to facility maintenance. The two of them make a great team and are getting a lot done and we're doing some preventative maintenance instead of all reactive maintenance. So facility maintenance right now with the two people are just fine. Environmental compliance manager is a businessperson I know on the face of the earth. To give her a little source of relief, we've hired two on-call as needed environmental consultants, which is helpful, but it's expensive. And we're about to go to council with an amendment, a budget augmentation to add more money because we just don't have the horsepower in-house to do that. A wishlist would be to add a full-time senior analyst, a, a, a share position between the environmental compliance manager, either myself or the forestry, the city forester. Streets, we're pretty good shape. We have the one vacant position. Wishlist would be to add one or two additional ones beyond that. A concern coming down the road is that we have two senior maintenance workers that are within the year or two of retiring. We've heard about the tree care specialist that just resigned, does it next week? Uh, we have one person in-house that's chronically ill. And so when, well, when we rehire the three people that are on the books today, we'll be up to 17.25 positions, which is better than 15. But it's not back anywhere near the 21 that was intended when I first started.
So my wish for public works would be to create, and we don't have a senior analyst, we've got an administrative analyst position. An analyst position, an analyst position is like a utility player, someone that could apply for grants. They could do bidding on fire fuel load, because I'm looking at you and you live next to the preserve. You know, that could help out, but, but this is not an administrative position. It's an analyst position. Someone that could create pretty tables, that could do grant reporting, a whole variety of things. But they would, they would be a utility player across the divisions within public works. And then I'd like three more maintenance workers. Again, we've not, we weren't prepared for this, obviously, this, this line of questioning, which is great. But you know, again, as I've told you at our individual updates, I am going to be coming to you probably in December and with, with a list of, of projects, I'm sorry, positions I'd like to add to the budget. So, but we need to be conscious of, again, you know, yeah, I know that, that TOT was 1.8. It still makes my hands sweaty to, to, you know, to, to spend too much money without knowing what's going to happen in the future. So.
That's one of the advantages to contract labors. You know, it's terminated contracts, it's kind of hard to terminate a full-time employee. That's the difference. So Bob, if I might ask, so how much management does Carmel cares take? How much time do you have to dedicate to them?
We're, no, absolutely not. I was gonna, I think there was a little more time involved initially when we were first getting started, get the ball rolling. But there, uh, we, we are not providing enough city support to them. For example, uh, uh, Councilwoman Felido talked about the, the beach signs. They had a proposal to change all the signs on the beach to be consistent, you know, framed consistently. Great idea, wonderful. I passed around, uh, some exhibits and things that were suggested. I have another time to compile all that information back. Some people haven't given me the information. So there, so there. So there's, there's some initiatives that are on hold because the city staff can't keep up with them. One thing I was thinking about, it's not just Carmel cares, I mean, they have the median minders. That could certainly use some more help from city staff. They have the tree care tenders, wonderful. They have the pickup posse, which is wonderful. They're often running on their own. And, and we're glad, but it's not a whole lot of city support for them. We also have the Friends of Carmel Forest. We also have the Friends of Mist Trail Nature Preserve. We have the Friends of the, less around street data plant garden. We have the Garden Club. I think there's like ten or twelve support groups that if we had the capacity to, to guide them, to have us help, you know, I think we'd get a whole lot more bang for the buck. Having them provide free, you know, free resources, but we just, right now, it's just bare bones.
So on, so number thirty-six on the latest list is the scenic pathway barriers. That is a project that is kind of hung up because of the fact that it's got to go out to a competitive bid. Am I right on that? And I'm not really impressed by the argument that that is mandatory because we're governmental agency. It seems to me, and I'm not saying we do anything covert or, you know, sketchy here, but I think there must be a way to legally get them under the heading of something of, you know, they're putting out a service provider, what do they call now? They've got them some sort of different definition of their existence.
Oh, they're, they're a city support crew.
Right. So that, it's my understanding that product's funded, and it's also, they're ready to go on it. But it's number thirty-six, and it has, under the list of problems, it has quite a few associated with.
It's not ready to go. There's a plan. They, Carmel cares put together a plan.
Pull your hands down so you're blocking the light.
Sorry. Carmel cares has put together a plan. We don't have the specifications, we don't have the contract documents, we don't have anyone to oversee the bidding process. There's also another.
Why does it have to be a bidding process, other than the fact that we've been told that legally you have to do that? Seems to me that if there's something legally, because we're a governmental entity, if we had a different relationship with them, where they're almost considered employees, it'd be an in-house project. Can't you get in and then?
I, I would have to check with legal, but I know that.
Let's chip, you and I talked about this a couple of weeks ago. That was a concern of mine.
Yeah, yeah. So it's public property, so, you know, we are bound by certain state government codes, and oh, there's the city attorney.
How about that?
Where are you, Brian?
Your office is great, Brian.
I was just waiting for the question.
The question, well, this was a question that I didn't expect an instant answer to. It just seems to me that there is a process that would allow us to have special status for Carmel cares, so that they didn't have to go out to a competitive bid project and projects that they were bringing forward. I'm not saying, I'm not saying we skip the design or compromise public safety or health in any way. Just seems to me that if there, if we had a different relationship with Carmel care, we said that relationship's improved over the course of time. There's no doubt about that, but I would be interested in what the answer was, and we were supposed to have an offline conversation about this, you and I and Chip.
No, I can certainly, I can certainly look into that further. I know that there are certain bidding requirements for Public Works projects under the public contracts code, and also under your purchasing policy. There are situations where you do need to either go out to bid or for an RFP, but I can look into that further and get back to council on it.
That'd be great.
And Brian, if I, if I may, this is Bob. There, there's probably a two-part question. One is if city funds are involved versus strictly private funds. I believe once city funds are involved, which is one of the budgets of CIP projects, that triggers the public contract code. So maybe the question is if it's strictly a private project.
Exactly.
With private.
Kind of creativity I was looking for.
Private, really privately funded, can that happen?
I'll, I'll include that in the equation.
Very great. If we could have a conversation about that, maybe three or four of us, that'd be lovely. Appreciate it, Karen.
Yeah, I think it's vitally important that we find the, the support that we need for these volunteer groups. We are in danger of burning them out if we don't respond to some of their suggestions, their plans. We need to keep them motivated. I was up at Lester Roundtree on Saturday with the master gardeners. The master gardeners are supposed to be pruning and caring for the plants, and they're almost exclusively now having to rake the pathways. And that's not really what the master gardeners want to be doing in the garden, but they feel it's necessary to do it because we don't have that landscape contract anymore. And I see sometimes the frustration on the volunteers on the beach pathway when they're actually sweeping stairways and sweeping the street up. There are some things that, you know, they need support with, and we need to provide that because they're providing invaluable service and hours. And I don't think, frankly, right now, we could do it without our volunteer groups. So I think we need, very seriously need to consider what Bob is saying, that he needs this, these, these positions to support those volunteer groups.
I, I started to go there on Sunday during Mr. Byrne's award, which the Councilmember Felida's asked me, and all of my executive team knows, you know, you've asked me, what would we do without the volunteer groups? Well, the, you know, the city would look a lot different unless we, unless we, the city would look a lot different unless we spent capacity to either enhance positions or to get contract work to, to, to do the work that's being done by our volunteer groups. And we're, we're so grateful because we, we literally, with our current capacity, we could not do it without them. And based on the number of concerns that we receive about the state of the village, maintenance state of the village, those would be exponentially more without our support groups or without enhanced resources in, in Bob's particular department. But again, that's across the board. Remember, I mean, you start from, start from the left, you know, up there. Again, we've got three groups. CPLF, Carmel Public Library Foundation, the library board, you're appointing to us, and the Friends of Carmel Public Library, that are advocates of the library. They're the ones that call me and say, Chip, why don't we, why aren't we open ninety-six hours a week again? Why isn't local history open? Why, you know, so again, we've got a core group of people, very impassioned people about our libraries. We have the maintenance people, we have the development community, and the residents who say, I want to, I want to alter my, you know, I want to alter my building or put a new roof on or, or what have you. We have the advocacy group. I talked to Dr. Sharp yesterday. He's very happy, incidentally, with, with your decision on the section one fifteen trust, if that makes any difference. But, you know, we have to take care of our books. We have to, you know, we've got the administrative side of the house, Maxine's side of the house, and we've got the ops side of the house that comes down to what, what, what Chief Euler does, protecting the village, protecting people that want to come over here and take things and hurt people and take advantage of us and, and fire and, and, and paramedic service as well. So you're a full-service city in one square mile. So we just, we need to expand our resource base.
So this is my standpoint, and I hope to lay from a public standpoint, been very helpful. If you look at the budget, in this current fiscal year, we have funded and adopted eighty-one positions, but we actually have ninety-four that we used to fund totally. So we're still short of where we were years ago. So what we're seeing is, several years ago, when Chip came on board, we had this restructuring, this, you know, getting back to business. Well, we're having to do the same thing with the advent of COVID. So we're rebuilding again, and that's what we're seeing. So I think we need to keep that in mind.
You know, when I, I tell the story, when I was here, the first time, we had, we had over a hundred and five employees. That was, we were humming along, you know, pretty, pretty good at that point in time. I'm not suggesting that we need a hundred and five today, but the delta between a hundred and five and seventy-something is, is, you know, they're whatever, almost forty positions. So somewhere in between there. And again, I've, I've committed to you, and your, now it's recorded. So I'm committing to you to come back, hopefully in December, and, and talk about the positions that we, we can, we need to better take care of you and the, and the, and our residents and our visitors. Maxine, I'm sorry, what do you?
And just to finish off, just because I've gone through every department, I just want to finish off with police and ambulance. So the adopted funded vacant positions in the police department are now the chief public safety director, the police commander, and then one police services officer. So we did have a fourth one, which was a police officer, but there is a conditional offer out to a current person right now. So that's why I'm only counting three, because I have an offer out to a police officer right now. And then paramedic firefighter, that position, like I said, has been filled, but is scheduled to start in like two weeks. And in general, just so you, you have an idea. So when I do the HR budget, we usually typically, I call for budgeting aspects when we look at, you know, workload for the fiscal year. When we look at recruitments, the formula that I use is usually a ten percent turnaround, so that I would be doing six recruitments in a fiscal year. That would be.
Turnover.
Turnover, yeah. But there's, there's always kind of a ten percent turnover. That is the formula for most organizations. So when I'm building my budget of staffing and what we're going to do for the year, I'm building in six recruitments for the fiscal year. You know, we're at fourteen sixteen. I mean, it's, so that is also why this is, yeah, a full-time, two full-time positions right now of just doing recruitments if we had somebody. And I have gone out to ask if there's any recruiters out there, can't find any recruiters. It's costing fifteen thousand dollars for a non-executive position. So a maintenance worker, a PSO, project manager, costs fifteen thousand dollars from a consultant firm just to do one recruitment. So that is just, again, right now, there is, there's just a high demand for recruiting right now.
And Councilmember, before I forget, on the wishlist is also, we've got Sebastian in the back, he's come to your houses and helped with your computers. He's a part-time, regular part-time position. I'd like to increase that to a, a, a full-time position as well. You know, again, you know, all these factors that all our, all our colleagues tell us about, and, and we, we've got a lot of, we've got a lot of tech needs, and Joel really needs a, a full-time second, not, not a part-time. Last year, we ran it hours, and we had to, we had to sit in there. So anyway, thank you. This is a good exercise, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much.
So Bob, not to let you off the hook, but just to, under the heading of newfound monies, seems to me that one of the places where we could be finding some dollars that are, I think, critical for all members of the council, and that is the downtown area where, you know, the streets are a little messy, that there could be some tidying up done. We've got forty thousand dollars a month, newfound money coming in from the parklets, basically. Seems to me that if we took that and said that out to a private contractor, we could do that instantaneously. Yeah, I don't want to see that money just disappear into the general.
No, what, what, I mean, when, when we set that up, Mr. Mayor, you guys talked about using that for additional code compliance, and that's, you know, that's where we've spent the money, because Bo had spent so much of his time policing those, those outdoor seating areas and their associated owners. But, but, well, you know, you just sent out the invoices for, for the next period as well, so.
Well, I, I think so. There's also the COVID relief money that's going to be sitting out there. That hasn't been earmarked specifically.
We are coming back to you in January. You know, we've, we've talked about that, and again, just a shameless pitch. I, I too would rather not just have it disappear. I'd rather promote something that was an iconic project that we could point to in the future. Eight hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars, nine hundred thousand dollars or so. Congressman Panetta spoke about it twice in the last week that we got, we got money. So think about it, we're going to come in January with some ideas. That's over two years, of course. We don't have all the money yet.
So just let me go back to send the newfound parklet monies. What, what is that going to do? We're going to fund some supplemental code enforcement with that?
Yeah.
For forty thousand dollars a month?
But no, not, not per month, not, not per month, but that was your idea.
Balance of money.
Pardon me?
What happens to the balance of the money?
I, it's, it's unallocated.
Okay. Okay, well, my, my personal hope would be that we could allocate that towards some sort of downtown beautification effort, because I think Karen's spoken quite articulately on that several times. The fact that she thinks it's getting a little funky downtown, and I think we would agree that we could do some work on that, so.
We'll, we'll bring it back and ask for three votes in that direction.
Yes, Bobby, I'm sorry.
Well, back to the support group, back to the support groups and the, the importance of them. Bob, would it be worth it for us to look into, like, hiring some sort of liaison that would work directly with them and for them, or, you know, along with them, to get projects pushed through where they wouldn't have to go through you or? It, it, it's certainly an option, but I think we need someone who knows the city regulations and city requirements. I mean, they can self-regulate all they want, but we have to, if they're working on our behalf, we have to make sure they're following the rules. Well, that's why, if we had a liaison that would work with them, that go to directly go to these projects. Frankly, I was thinking the senior analyst or senior management, whatever, that position is a utility player. I think that person would be uniquely qualified to work with the different friends groups and the Carmel cares and things to, to give them the guidance and the time they need.
Great. Thanks, Bob.
Chip, to your, your comment a minute ago, about this being a good process, I really think this is the right way to go. Whether, whether we could go ahead and pick all these projects all the way on, and say, well, we want to do this one, do that, but all we're going to hear is we don't have the resources from a staff standpoint. Carrie, well done. Good, good suggestion about organizing. All right, any other departments?
Done, Maxine. You done?
All right. I'm still not convinced that we've seen exactly what we want in specifics as far as staffing goes. I'd like to see this written out somewhere, so we could actually understand what it is with a timeline for delivery. I know I've heard you're coming back in November.
Yeah.
Or December, but the sooner the better. If we had to have another study session on this very topic, I think there'd be value in that.
Um, yeah, so we're, we're, again, we're in the process of mapping it out, and I socialize, I've been socializing with you again individually for the last several months at our individual updates. And so again, we'll be poised to come back. I think we, we just targeted December, because again, it will be a, a, a budget, a budget amendment resolution.
Jeff would like to opine again on his frustrations with the calendar rapidly disappearing, but Jeff, did you, didn't you have some concerns about time lapsing here?
Yeah, I just sit here and I'm just kind of frustrated, you know, as I've said before, I mean, I don't really have anything to add to it, other than I do agree with you that I think that the sort of mid-year budget cycle would be the right place to do this. It sounded like that's what you're saying. I don't know when.
It'd be pre, it'd be pre-mid-year, but again, you're going to get a quarter one update in November. So on the second, you get a quarter one update and then any, you know, any modifications. And then what we were hoping to do is come back and, and amend the position control list, which is the document that Maxine read from in, in December. Not creating new positions, but augmenting the existing position control list with a rationale for why we want to add the positions we want to add.
Yeah, I'm okay for now.
Okay.
All right. So do we want to go, Karen, go ahead, so?
Yes, I think this, these times call for maybe a different creativity when it comes to recruitment. Rather than a dry process, I, I looked around at a few other cities on their websites of what they were recruiting for, and there were a couple. One in particular, Pismo Beach, actually has their city administrator on a video giving a PR speech of why you should come to work for Pismo Beach.
You're setting me up perfectly. I contracted yesterday with Jeff Burkhart to do a video.
Well, that sounds.
We have all the B-roll from Visit Carmel, which we've already contributed to, so that's all the same. Sharon blessed it, everybody blessed it yesterday. Well, the money, the money lady's blessed it. But yeah, he's coming, I think he's coming on Thursday, so it's going to be a, you know, we, we typically market the destination for visitors. We're marketing the city for employees.
Absolutely.
So we're going to have police officers and, you know, the tech guy will obviously be in it. And, you know, people, you know, come and work with us. There's another one that's fantastic for El Dorado County. You know, we're, we're nature's playground or something like that, but come here. It could be a marketing piece, but it's to attract employees. So it's going to cost eleven thousand five hundred dollars, but it's under my authority. I think it's money well spent. That's something we'll be able to continue to use theoretically for years to come.
Yeah, and make sure you show them a lot of beautiful scenery.
Yeah, I just, you know, as I sit over here and think about this, so to add to sort of what, for riff on what Karen said. You know, part of my frustration is that, you know, I hear you talking about fit sort of constantly, and yet I hear that we're having a tremendous ti, tremendously difficult time hiring people. And, you know, it seems like, and, and this is just from my chair. You know, it seems like the road we're on to hiring people is not working. And, you know, it, it, I have this feeling that we're sort of falling a little bit behind. You know, we've, we lost Chip, and we lost, sorry, we lost Britt, and we lost Paul. You know, we lost a tree care worker, we lost a maintenance worker. I don't know whether that was salary issues. You know, and, and these, these resignations are people. You know, and, and these, these resignations or people leaving, you know, it feels like we're not playing the right game anymore. And, and, you know, and, and so the way that we're doing this, you know, the package that we're offering or the way that we're recruiting, you know, some combination of those things just isn't working. And, and I'm worried that we're just going to get further behind. You know, I know that we've almost lost a couple of key employees. You know, in the course of the past year, that would have just been a disaster. I know it's been very difficult. You know, I know that people are leaving, you know, public sector jobs. And I think that, you know, this stuff, you know, the stuff that we're seeing about, you know, everybody's having a hard time, you know, hiring every, hiring people. I mean, I see that. But that, that's, you know, okay. I mean, that's just a thing, you know, it's hard to hire people. And I think we need to really reevaluate what we're offering or how we're hiring to get past that. And I think that, you know, if, if you and, and you know, you know, I don't mean this personally, of course, you know, you know, we have a good relationship. But if the fit thing is causing us to, you know, there are all these things that go into hiring someone, you know, fit and salary and work environment and whatever. And if, and if we're, if we're so determined to maintain, you know, the fit requirement for people that work here, then we need to pay people more. Or we need to let them work from home, or we need to do something to sweeten the pot in some other area. Like why? You know, if that person is a good fit here, I suspect they're a good fit in Monterey and Pacific Grove too. Why should they come here? You know, you spoke a few minutes ago about, you know, you know, the fact that we're competing with Bay, we know with the Bay Area communities now. And yet the, the, you know, the sort of, when we've had discussions about the amount of money that we pay people and doing these sort of comps between Carmel and other cities. You know, we talked about small coastal cities. You know, we talk about, you know, Karen mentioned Pismo Beach, you know, we talked about Pismo Beach and we talked about Santa Cruz or whatever, whatever these communities are. But if that's not who our competition is anymore, then, then we need to reevaluate like how much we're paying people. And I know that, you know, I know that, you know, I know that we have, you know, that we, we grasp about people salaries, but the fact is it is what it is. And, and it, it doesn't seem to me like we're really where we had have a handle on sort of how to effectively hire and maintain people. You know, or, or the, the tactics that have worked in the past, you know, seem to be not working now. And, and that's a, that's a big concern of mine.
Yes, sir. I, I hear what you're saying. Fits a two-way street. I mean, you know, it has to be the right employee for our village and our team. And it also has to be the right fit, someone moving here to a relatively high high cost of living area. I mean, it's a, it's a small community. I mean, Brandon's planners could be working on thousand house subdivisions, not who, who would want to do that, of course, but you know, doing, doing a different, different level of things. I think we work at a very high intellect level. I think we have more intellectual challenges across the board here than in jurisdictions multiple times our size. So I think intellectually it's challenging. You are going into negotiations with all of your organized labor. The contracts end in June 30th of, of 2022. So we'll, we'll be talking about, we'll, we'll be talking about that again. And we'll have data for you with our competitive set. But again, that, I started, you know, that, that fit is, is a two-way street. It's not just getting Carmel by the sea on your resume. And we, we work, people, people work hard here. They're very dedicated. We build loyalty. And we, we compensate them at what we believe is a, is a fair level. Yes, ma'am.
So I, I do agree with Jeff's concern. I think we're, we're through COVID, we're experiencing some burnout. And I think we have to be very cognizant of that. I think we need to be flexible with work schedules. I think we need to take a look at our salary ranges. I mean, the reason we don't have a commander is because there's some compaction in the salary. So when you're a police, when you're a police officer and you get overtime, what's the incentive to become a commander? When you don't get overtime and you get hardly a very small difference in, and I'll have the chief speak to that, in an increase to take that huge responsibility. The reason we don't have anybody right now that's coming up like Chief Tomasi did is because we don't have a commander. So those are the things that we need to look at. And so I, I agree on that as a council, we need to set some direction here on this topic.
And I'd love to see you stand united because again, there are other communities that don't have a very well researched and written daily public, weekly publication. Again, Marina does not have a weekly paper. Seaside does not. So yeah, I mean, you stand united with whatever, whatever stance you have really helps protect your decision and help, helps protect the employees who, who, who serve you. I'm sorry, I cut someone off.
I wanted to know, maybe you already do this, but do you do exit interviews when
Yes, ma'am.
Employees leave?
Hundred percent.
Okay. And do you do an employee survey periodically during the year to test the temperature?
We, we do that episodically, periodically, not, it's not on a regular basis.
It's part of your performance eval.
Pardon me?
It's part of your performance eval.
We, we do every, every several years, we do what's called a three sixty on me. Where you talk to three people who are my contemporaries, other city managers, three people I work for the community and three people who, who work for me. And that could be line staff or executive staff members, Mr. Mayor. To get, to get that feedback on the all-around basis.
Before we take a bio break, we're halfway through the morning session. Perhaps we just entertain any more public commentators or anybody else in the public has anything else to add? Okay. I see the public shaking their head. So I'll say no. Yeah, exactly. All right. Why don't we take a?
And anybody else on the, anybody on the phone, Sebastian? Okay, thank you.
All right. Well, I, I do think this is a productive area to go in. I'd ask council, do you want to go through this list after the break? To just go ahead and get a full understanding of what the projects are. I'd be adverse to going ahead and prioritizing at this moment because of the fact we don't know where we're going to be from a staffing standpoint. But that, I'm just one person. What do you guys think? You want to go through the list of projects and get a familiarization with them? And not prioritize them? Or do you want to try to prioritize them knowing, not knowing whether we have the adequate staff to go in and deliver them? I think if I know I've got the staff, I'm going to go ahead and change my priorities perhaps.
Well, is there any of these projects that the staff would feel comfortable and the council would feel comfortable deleting so that we can really focus on, you know, strategic planning?
Yeah, I think, I think, you know, I would just re-up my, my suggestion once again that I made at the beginning, which was sort of the capital improvement, like some of the projects have already been greenlit. And I think we should take those off the list and put them on a separate list of greenlit projects. You know, we had discussions about those. I don't, I don't particularly feel the need to go back and decide, you know, have another conversation about the Mission Trail Nature Preserve's team stability study projects one through three, because we funded that. We have funding for that. We decided we were going to do it. I don't feel the need to, I don't think we're going to necessarily get anything from talking about, from talking about the projects that have been greenlit already. So at a minimum, you know, I would ask us, I would ask, you know, I would ask you, Dave, if we could take the things that are on the capital improvement project budget and have been funded and just sort of either just put them on a separate list and give them a priority zero, which means we've already decided to move ahead with them.
Well, I think that's a good point. We need them on a list.
Yeah.
Because they, when we look at the other projects, that has to do with staffing levels.
Yes.
So we, we need them on a, a list. So we're looking at them. So when we decide we want to do another project, we're going to turn to Bob and say, given the CIP and given this project, what are the chances of it's going to happen? I think that's what you're saying.
Yeah.
That's fine. That's, that's true. We, we, again, we seeded, we seeded the priority list with the capital projects. So again, you could see the full universe of things that are not routine in nature and take some capacity.
But to your, but to your point, like when I looked on the list, you know, the third item on this list or the fourth item on this list, you know, is update purchasing ordinance. You know, there's no progress. It's high. It's financed. It's a strategic initiative. So you gave it a project, a priority one. But I would say that that falls behind the CIP projects because the CIP projects have already been discussed and approved. And I know that we have talked about this before.
Yes, sir.
But this is a strategic planning meeting, not a capital improvement project budget meeting, not a, not a, not a meeting. I don't think anyway, to talk about things that we've already decided to do.
Yeah, that, I mean, that, that would be one that falls under, under state law. And the mayor was just talking about, you know, purchasing. And, and Sharon's actually going to, going to pivot to, to that next, but it, it will also help us be more efficient in implementing our capital projects in the future.
I understand. I understand. I, I think we're, you know, I understand that.
Yes, sir.
But.
Would it be helpful for Brandon to do his magic on this list and put all the CIP things?
Yeah, I was, I was going to suggest so that we keep some continuity with the numbering. I can just go through really quickly on the break and just highlight the CIP projects in pink. It's actually in the far right column, but as we're going through this one, so you can actually see them all do highlights in pink on the lines that are CIP projects. And then we can just, you know, skip over them if that's the council's desire.
Fifteen minutes adequate time for that?
Oh, yeah.
All right. So why don't we take a fifteen minute bio break? We'll come back and commence the balance of work.
Coming, Councilmember Felido. There she is. All right, Mayor, we're back. Just a reminder for those tens of thousands of people in the virtual world on Zoom. The way to unmute is to click the unmute button. And if you're on a mobile device, what is it, star six, Joel? Star six to unmute if you'd like to make public comment. Star nine to raise your hand. Thank you for that little tidbit. How about emojis? Oh, so we're ready for you, Mayor. Whatever you want to do. So Brandon's gone ahead and highlighted the capital projects. In pink on the sheet and we can.
Walk through those.
Walk through the capital projects?
Well, there's only, is that it? The only the ones we see right there?
No, it scrolls down farther.
Yeah, so let's go ahead and show the public what the entirety of it looks like.
So Bob said there's fifteen capital projects that are funded this year, Council.
Okay, so Brandon, your chip, why should read those off? And Brandon, a little bit of a status report on where they are in the process of, you know, whether they in design or they in instruction, are they?
Yeah, let's do it. Let's just do a real quick, real quick, Bob. Let's not dwell on any of them, but from the top, what do we have?
Okay, so. ADA upgrades, that's in-house project.
It's part of our annual, we always do a little bit.
This year, we're gonna do another fountain in the park, railing and some apartment, more bathroom partitions we need here. In-house project, it's, it's moving along. The annual paving project with the sidewalk repairs, we added in the sidewalk repair since that was added by Council at the the budget meeting. The plans are a hundred percent done. We need someone to convert the technical specifications into contract documents before we go out to bid. We also need to do a public here, another, another public meeting to show them what it would look like with bike lanes and median islands along San Carlos. So it's very close. I'm, I'm not prepared to advertise that for bids yet without having a project manager who could address questions and run a pre-bid meeting and all that kind of stuff. So we're kind of stuck, but it's.
And that public meeting with the residents of San Carlos and Mission and Hunipuro right here are very important because of course there were a lot of people who were non-support. So again, that'll be an important public meeting, but it is part of the bike lanes and the medians are part of, and we, we made the changes that you directed at the last public meeting.
It's supposed to go on up for construction. Mission Trail Nature Preserve, Streamability Study are projects number one through three. This is grant funded with that a hundred and eighty thousand dollar coastal conservancy grant. We have to do environmental review and permitting, which has not yet started. We also need to hire a, a, a design consultant to do the design work. It's not a very complicated design work, but the environmental review process is really on the critical path at this point and.
It's an Asha, it's really highly sensitive habitat.
We'll need a streamed. Stuff like that.
It's probably a navigable water of the US. Who knows what we're gonna run into?
There is a, there is a deadline to spend the money, which I believe is December of twenty twenty-three. So we need to kind of get started on that fairly soon to, to meet that deadline. Park branch library generator, we had quotes from a year ago. We're, we're getting revised quotes. We have a tree in the way. We have a slab to fix and we were gonna do the civil part of the work ourselves and just have the contractor install the, the generator. So we're making some progress.
That would be in the little alleyway between on the east side, yeah. And then, of course, we have, we have servers or clouds or something and we have a server room in the basement of the park branch.
Police station radio antenna, I believe we're still waiting for the county two hundred thousand dollar county grant. We, if we haven't received that money yet, is that right?
We have not.
He, he'll turn it on for you.
We have not received that money and the word I received is that we're just waiting from the notification from the county that we would, that has, that has been awarded.
And I believe the county will also install it.
It's my understanding.
When the time comes, but we'll be working with Joel on IT and connections and electrical stuff. So that's kind of stuck with the county. The uncalled tree and landscaping bids and contracts, it's not a CIP per se, but it's it's goes through the same type of process as a CIP project where we have to together a formal bid documents. For both the uncalled tree contractors, which we have, which we have, but their term is expiring.
Okay.
And let.
So I, this is, this is sort of the, this is know whether it's on or not. This is sort of the, this is goes to one of my issues that I spoke of at the very beginning. You know, I think that the maintenance of these uncalled tree and landscaping contracts, that's not a strategic priority. That's part of what staff does.
Yes, sir.
And, and this is a thing that I personally would like to see just taken off the list because I don't want to talk about it. I just want staff to do it. And I don't mean to minimize the importance of that. You know, but this seems pretty much core to the mission of the city enterprise. And, and it takes up brain space to, you know, this is a very important meeting. And I think that the, there are projects like this that take up brain space that need to not take up brain space. And also, I have to admit, I'm a little bit alarmed to see that it was, that it now I'm hearing is not part of the CIP budget. And there's marked as CIP, so that's a little bit alarming to me. So you know, because that's just not a right piece of information on this report, but I would ask that we just get rid of that, like just excise it from this spreadsheet altogether. This is, this is one of those things that, that I don't understand why we talk about.
Well, I, I guess I'm a little, I'm questioning the CIP designation as well since you know, it's, it's not in the budget.
That's correct.
So, um. And my other question is, is, you know, we have done uncalled tree and landscaping bids and contracts a lot before. So is it really, um, take a high level of staff time because it, it would seem to me we're kind of redoing what we've done before. But it, I understand the staff time it takes to assess once the bids come in. But there should be a boiler, boilerplate for this. I guess that's what I'm wondering.
If I may, there is an existing, existing contracts that have been used. It just needs to be updated. That's true. The only reason I put CIP is because the process is like other CIP projects. Process wise, not, it's not a separate identified capital project. Now the funding behind those contracts would be in the operating budget. And then the other, I guess the reason also I put it on the list was, was because of, of staffing capacity. So these are, these are, you know, ongoing core tasks for the forestry division. And they will, they'll be happening whether or not they're listed on the chart. But it's a, it takes capacity and it takes funding.
Yeah, and I, and you know, which goes back to my first point, which is, you know, I as a council member want you, want staff to just do all the things that we expect you to do as an ongoing enterprise. Without us constantly having to, you know, it feels like you're asking us to sort of micromanage you or micro fund you or whatever it is. And that's not what I want to do. And that's not what you want us to do, for sure. So. you know, it's just weird having this, having these types of things, you know, on this list, you know, yeah.
Yeah. Well, I think maybe, correct me if I'm wrong, Chip, but maybe it got on this list because you asked us for this money. You asked us for a landscaping fund and we approved that contract or we approved that money, right? Is that why it got on this list basically?
It, it was on the list because it, it's just, it's something that's, that takes a little bit more capacity than ordinary ongoing maintenance issue. And so again, we just wanted you to see the full universe of issues that take a little bit more than average capacity. Certainly understand, I certainly understand what you're.
And I think that there's a place for that. I mean, I think, you know, I know that Bob has, I know that there used to be and there probably still are work plans for what some of the departments do. And I think that those work plans are, are good place, is a good place to sort of identify these sort of routine recurring things, even if they're large that happen every year, like we don't, for example, have an entry on this list for all the work that Sharon does for preparing a budget. I mean, Sharon spends a third of her time preparing a budget and yet that's not on this list. And so that's, that's sort of goes to.
Yeah. So the priority ones, there are six out of 20, out of 25. So I mean, that is 20% of, of the priority ones. But again, we, we hear what you're saying. We, we put it out there. We, we want you to understand that those are, those are high capacity issues as well. Why don't we move to the next one, Bob? Drainage system repairs. This is the storm drain system.
Right. This would be the first year of design of storm drain system repairs. It hasn't gotten off the dime at this point. No, no progress whatsoever. Ending a project manager, decommissioning the well, the tank and mission trails. Also, nothing has happened to date. Scenic pathway barriers, that's the project where Carmel cares, has put together the basic plan and done some research and things. We have a head start. There, we've also been talking to Ken White for possible funding of the Ocean Median Fencing Project. The thought here is to combine both similar projects into one bid package. That's an unknown at this point. But we might get better bids if we do combine them for increased quantities. So again, the things have started for both scenic pathway and ocean median fencing, but it's not a, not too far into going out to bid yet. So it's a center window, hazardous material testing, no progress. Scenic road sewer replacement line. Now, this is a different animal here. If you recall a couple of years back, we had PG&E do the I think it was a four inch gas line across the northern part of the city. There was a, a lot of staff time to monitor, keep them minimize the damage. We had, I think, 59 conditions of approval for that permit. It was, it was, it was a mess, but we've got it done. And at the end we got all new paved streets. You know, that was the mitigation. Scenic Road, the sewer, they're going to tear apart the sewer from Ocean down to the.
When he says they, this is the Carmel area wastewater district. We don't own, we own the storms and system, but not the sewage system. They own the pipes and conveyance.
Right. So it's going to be a big gnarly project that's supposed to happen before next summer. And it's, I don't know, so maybe 59 conditions of approval was going to be a bunch. So we already had some communication with COD on this. It's, it's just going to be time consuming and a big impact. There'll be public meetings. COD will present to the council what exactly will be going on when it gets closer.
But this is one, you know, again, they're going to be responsible for the outrage and education of all the impacted, but who's going to get the calls? You are, we are. So again, it, it is, it's a, it's, it's not even our project. So it's not, not only in that, not in a book anywhere. But again, it's something that will absorb capacity. We need to make sure all that, all the tie-ins with private property owners or we'll have to inspect all of those and are done correctly as well. So.
So I think part of it is the project type. I think it's really maintenance. It's a big maintenance project. It's, and so, you know, you have branded into our brains, capital improvement projects. I think those two need to be specific to what we have approved.
So we need to differentiate them really clearly.
A differentiation because, um, if somebody looks at this chart in the public, they're going to look on page 50 three, and they're not going to see it. So that's part of communicating also what capacity we have because of these other things. So I think we need a maintenance type, a, a project type.
Yeah.
That's what I'm, just to differentiate these.
Got it, got it.
And we're not minimizing them at all because I hear what Bob's saying. It is going to be, and if you don't keep on PG&E and you don't keep on COD, they're, they're going to do whatever in the heck they want. So I totally understand what you're saying. I just am trying to make this chart value, more valuable.
Yeah.
We have a couple of other things called miscellaneous project type. So maybe it's more miscellaneous than it is a CIP.
Miscellaneous, yeah.
Why? Can, can we talk about that specific project for a second? Is this the time to talk about scenic line, scenic road sewer line replacement? Like, what exactly is it? Like it says scenic lines, sewer.
They're replacing the entire wastewater line all the way down to their facility.
It's not going to be completely open trench. It's going to be because pipe burst, the old pipeline is falling apart.
It's leak eye and eye infiltration and.
Yeah. They've been going and peat a little spot at a time over and over and over, replacing laterals and things. So this will be a pipe bursting project, which will be interesting. So there'll be larger pits every, I don't know, 40, 50.
They'll pull, they'll pull a new plastic pipe through, but again, since it's right next to the National Marine Sanctuary, we don't want sewage perking in.
We're going to have traffic issues, neighborhood issues, noise. At the end, we'll have a nice new paved street again.
Do they handle the traffic control?
Yes.
Their contractors will.
Yes. Yeah, we'll put the burden on them to do everything.
So they're going to do, they're going to do traffic control and paving and.
We will obligate them to repave our street.
No, I think we're not, they're not going to do is answer the phone from all the irate neighbors and visitors. We'll have their phone number on the signs and the handouts here. But we'll still get our fair share of the calls.
One note with that project also because it's taking place in that area, we're going to have to process a coastal development permit as well. I've already, Bob and I have already had a conversation, early conversation with coastal commission staff just to make them aware. We thought maybe it could be exempted as a repaired maintenance project, but given the fact there's machinery that's close to Asha and the Marine Sanctuary, they don't exempt those projects. So we'll have to go through the CDP process as well.
The planning commissioner will issue that CDP. All right, what's the next one, Bob?
A beach sand and seawall survey. There has been no progress to date.
That's, that's an update to the.
The Shawnman report?
Yeah.
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 So what number, that's number 49.
What about?
So I, so a question I have on that, for example, is, sorry, is, is why is that? So beach sand seawall survey, like, is that something we're going to do ourselves or is that something we're going to contract out? We would hire a consultant.
Yeah, the professional geotechnical.
And that's, and that's what is listed as, so that thing is listed as a medium effort. Like I think that, you know, I think it's kind of a no, you know, one of the issues I had in reading over this was that I, I had a difficult time telling, trying to figure out what a high effort was and what a medium effort was and what a low effort was. And it would help me if we did this in the, you know, next time, if we had some definition. Like two weeks of FDE effort or eight weeks of FDE effort or 26 weeks of FDE effort, whatever that is.
We can do that. We can do that.
Yeah.
Okay, Coastal Conservancy Grant for Northland's got council approved, thus applying for the grant which we have. We've also submitted a project description. We're waiting for Coastal Conservancy to bless that project description and it's going to be a hurry up and wait for a while until we get it officially funded and then we can go forward design, but we're not there yet. Library's master plan. Ashley and I think it was Evan and I went through the segment qualifications we had for for the project. We have a consultant in mind. We haven't even talked to the consultant yet. So that's where that project is at. What's the next one?
Sixth Avenue, Devendorf.
Yeah. Council's familiar with that project. That's just really out, the outreach phase, not really any funding at this point. It's just public outreach and I think Ashley has done some of that to the Forest Beach Commission. I believe the city council, to the library district, library board. So it, it's just a warming up for a early phase of a lot longer, longer term project.
Yeah, I don't see that on the CIP budget either. You know, so I don't see that on the CIP budget. The library master plan is, there are a couple of things that were left off. Digitizing planning files is on the CIP budget and it's not on this list. So presumably that's going to take someone, some effort at least.
You're going to award the contract on November 2nd, but, but clearly.
But we talk a lot about oversight and.
Yeah.
Yep, it's a project.
So it's going to take some, it's going to take some staff effort.
Bob poked Brandon in the eye by not including that one on this list. So they'll have to, they'll have to wrestle it out.
He's jealous of how cool that project is.
I'm really jealous.
No, Bob's jealous, not you.
And then another thing I think that was just inadvertently left off this list, if we're getting to that point, is the HR ordinance. Like, don't we, don't we have an HR ordinance?
We have, yeah, yes, sir. We're, we're, yeah, we're revamping our, our human resources ordinance into policies. That's in progress as well. But yeah. So we'll add those, you know, as a separate box with the CIPs or the miscellaneous or something like that. Thank you for understanding that again, our, our, we just wanted you to see the full scope of the amount of effort that we're putting in for various in a sundry projects, some of which are, are not yours.
So we want to go back through.
Yeah. So, yeah, so that, those are the CIP council. Would you, do you want to, do you want to jump into the, the others?
I think that is, yes.
Okay, let, let, let's do that. Let's start at number one and, and talk about developing a multi-pronged financial strategy for, to address like pension liability. Again, you have found a trust administrator, you've, you've found a trustee, you've invested a million dollars this fiscal year. You've taken care of the investment vehicle, if you will, you know, what we're investing in and you've, you've fundamentally committed to investing a million dollars a year for the next additional four years. I mean, we're on that, we're on the kind of the finish line of this one. I think the only thing we haven't done is send them money.
What was that, about four years?
You fundamentally committed to investing $1 million per year for the next four additional years. It's a five-year kind of a game plan to get $5 million into the trust to pay for any of this, our various in a sundry pension liabilities. So we had some CDs that matured and we have some CDs mature that they're going to seed the money for, for this fiscal year. So that one, you know, is, is, I don't Sharon, how much, how much, Robin, how much capacity we have left on that? A handful hours, a dozen hours? It's kind of check. So we're, we're, we're transferring like electronic transfers. That one, you know, is, is, we want to take credit for it because again, next year's an election. I'm doing my evaluation. These are things we want to document and, and credit ourselves for and credit our, our team for obviously as well.
Wouldn't the level of completeness, aren't we like at 95% here?
Well, we drafted this council member, we were at about 80%. So since then, you took action at your
Last meeting.
October meeting and I think we just didn't update it since, again, this, this, we were scheduled to go through this in September. Then we decided to turn it into a workshop format for today. And so, yeah, we're, we're probably at about 95% completion there, Brandon. Paid parking, paid parking is, you know, what boxes does that check on the green sheet? Well, it could be a revenue source. It could be a safety issue. I was telling Chief Euler yesterday that, you know, almost every weekend you see a line of traffic that backs all the way up Ocean Avenue to to Highway one. And it's because we're not managing, Councilmember Rich, we're not managing our visitors very well. So would paid parking solve that? I, you know, Chief Tomasi felt very, very assured that it, that it would help. It would help prevent that. It would disperse people to park elsewhere, not having to go right down to Delmar to park. And again, it's, Brandon's giving you a couple of updates on where we are. Brandon, anything, what would you, what would you add?
I think you pretty much covered it, Chip, where, you know, at the point now where we left the council last time, we're going to start kicking into some public outreach to gain that buy-in. We talked about last time doing some sort of road shows, meeting with local community groups and talk about what we're working on for a program. We're going to solidify a partner to actually develop the program with and then come back to the city council in the next few months with a more solid program rather than coming back, you know, what do you want the program to look like? We got direction last time. Come back with a program that we can actually pick apart. So that's our next step is to come back to the city council with a program.
The beauty, the beauty of this being a high priority is that we've been, we've tilted against this windmill a couple of times. Most recently, you know, in 2015, when it was actually working, but you know, but, but the benefit is that technology has evolved since then. So again, you've gotten some reports. Again, our, our, our chief has worked on paid parking in South Lake Tahoe. So again, we can glean some information from him, but you know, we, we continue to believe that this should be a high priority project from a variety, variety perspectives and we should try to put some force power behind it. Yes, ma'am.
I don't know whether this is the appropriate time, but I feel very strongly that we are reacting to anecdotal information about traffic, congestion, walkability, tourist management, et cetera. And that what we perhaps ought to be looking at is how many things on this list could qualify to go under a downtown master plan revitalization plan, whatever you want to call it, that is farmed out to a, a design company or there are people that do this all over California to analyze what is working, what is not working and offer suggestions on a complete whole basis, whether we need a parking garage, how to distribute people throughout the village, whether we need to widen our sidewalks to accommodate outdoor dining. The library plaza extension. Opportunities downtown for affordable housing. Tomorrow night I am going to be at Ambag and we're going to talk about Rena allocations. They're not coming out quite yet, but they're coming out signage, tourist management, the state of the village, the post office. There are so many things that we could actually put together in a downtown revitalization, master plan, whatever we want to call it, and actually do real analysis of what's going on and get professional help rather than piecemealing and approving this and then it hamstrings it somewhere else, approving that, and then that interrupts something. Looking at it from the 35,000 foot level, what is working and what we need to consider in our village. And I think it would be money very well spent and it would not have to be in-house. So the capacity issue would not be there. We would spend the money to actually have a company come in, do what they do best and give us suggestions. Now, implementation of all that would be up to us, but it would allow us to look at the whole downtown instead of a piece here, a piece there, which is all coming out of our own capacity.
Which is item number 42.
Yes, but it, it influences paid parking, it influences an RFP for the sunset. Yes, but it, it influences paid parking, it influences an RFP for the sunset letter. You know, if we start doing them one by one, when they could all kind of. Go into one area, it might be. A good discussion.
I have a comment.
Sure.
So, I, I agree, we need a master plan, Karen. Um, it would be nice to, to tackle the, the. Parklet issue and the parking issue. But we can't do that because it still, it still requires staff capacity. To do a formal bid process, to write the documents, to examine who we're gonna. Put it out to, to decide who we're gonna select, and we don't have it budgeted. So this would be a great project for the next fiscal year when we have more capacity. And we can budget for it and we can have a discussion during the budget of it. But the one thing about paid parking is we know we have a problem with parking. And it's a revenue source which would help pay for some of the things that you wanna do. So. We, we need, you know. Right now, the hotels are doing great. Uh, you know, that's all, that's great. The restaurants, the retail is holding its own. That may not always be the case. So having another income source that allows our short-term. Visitor to contribute to the maintenance of our city, I think is a huge. Um, issue for paid parking. So I, I don't want, I wanna keep that as a number one. I don't wanna put it aside. It can be talked about because one thing about the way that paid parking is, it's very flexible. Right now with mobile apps, with kiosks. Dale's going to lunch probably not right now, but, you know, Carmel Kares could do a wonderful job with the kiosks if we give them a chance. So, uh, I like the idea of a master plan. I just think it needs to be down the road right now. It can't. In my opinion, it cannot be a number one um priority item.
Other comments concerned? Good thought. Are you cogitating?
I agree with Karen and Carrie. Um, mostly I would say I agree with, without, before we get to item number forty-two. I agree that, you know, we're off to a good start with the paid parking program. You know, it's a third done, you know, maybe it's twenty-five percent done. Um, you know, the, the, the policy, the framework stuff has been sort of set by the council. We've sort of. Greenlit this sort of exploration program. I thought, I think it's a good program. Um, you know, I, I, a little bit disagree with, with Karen's analysis that I think that paid parking is. Um, will happen, whatever we do with downtown. I, I don't think, I do not think that there is a downtown solution that, that will not involve paid parking. And so I think once we have a parking program in place, the, the effort will be carried over. When we, when we have the downtown master plan done, uh completed, the, the paid parking element will suddenly be shifted over to whatever that might be. Um, so I agree with Carrie and that I think we should, uh, this is, for me. Um, this would be, this would be near the top, near the top of the list. And I, I do also agree with Carrie that. I think the money from paid parking would in fact fund the downtown master plan project.
But going to Karen's original comments about bundling some of these other topics, other than the point parking into forty-two as a possibility?
I just, I just.
Your community outreach ends here.
Yeah, I. I think that we're just gonna overburden item forty-two with, um, you know, it's just, just gonna sink it. I ju- I think we should leave, leave paid parking the way it is and put it, and, and have it be a high priority project.
We do for general plan update at some point in your future.
Yeah, general plans are long, you know, long-range documents. I think we adopted in two thousand and three with the exception of the housing element, we've done tune-ups. So we're coming up on twenty years. Um, you know, that's, that's the place to start, Mr. Mayor, is, is, you know, as Councilmember Felido suggesting is. Is look at all of our, of, of our policies and determine if they're still consistent with our belief system. Trickle down to the ordinances.
We are, we're gonna have to open up the general plan in twenty twenty-three for a housing element.
For the housing element, yeah, yeah.
And don't, you know, according to, you know, sources, don't we have to open up the general plan to accommodate some of the um outdoor dining? Outdoor dining items as well?
If that, if that does get approved, if we want to actually take a program forward, the council decides to keep that going, then yes, there would be some general plan amendments as well.
And are there general plan amendments required for paid parking?
That one I have to look at to be a hundred percent sure. I, I think the general plan does speak to free parking down at Delmar, so there would be a little cleanup there. Uh, wouldn't be a major overhaul overall, though.
Yeah, I think it says maintain free parking in Delmar. Yes, we'd have to.
So, so there would be a general plan amendment for the beach parking, but not, not, well, I'll, I'll leave this to you.
Correct.
So, so we seem to have a general consensus, oh, I'm sorry, consensus. We have consensus that paid parking will stay as a high priority. Thank you for smiling, Mr. Mayor. Um, at-home letter delivery, again, now there's three different topics about at-home letter delivery. One. Is Peninsula Messenger Service, who's gonna pay? Sharon spent. A, a good amount of time dealing with Peninsula Messenger Service and those people that cannot physically get to the post office. So I think that that one is pretty, pretty well put to bed, although we're still getting a lot of calls. The next question is um home addresses, just a number on the house, three oh three. Uh, uh, Santa Fe, uh, what, you know, what, just a street address. The third question is again, at home, I'm sorry, postal delivery. In some kind of a gang mailbox, but they are discreet, they are discreet um, uh, decisions. Uh, cuz one of the council members was telling me recently about trying to get, uh, you know, trying to set up a financial advisor because of new. Uh, DOJ requirements or, or getting certain permits or getting your packages delivered is becoming, or your, your Comcast. Uh, you know, your internet service is getting more and more challenging because we don't have street addresses. So just on, on the first, on the first question, which is. Uh, yeah, Guadalupe, Guadalupe Street here. Um, Peninsula Messenger Service, I think we've got pretty well wrapped up, and it goes to the next one, which is. Sharon has said, as I said earlier, she's ready to uh begin uh dealing with the purchasing ordinance, which again, you'll see. Uh, because it is an ordinance, but you know, again, Peninsula Messenger Service is pretty well wrapped up, Sharon. And then, and what, what do you, what do you think, you know, what do you think on the purchasing? Um, uh, two hours, two and a half hours or something like that? Two hundred hours, so.
Well, I mean, talking about a total rewrite of the ordinance and. Uh, two readings to counsel, so I'd probably, with legal help, um, probably fifty to a hundred hours.
Right, also, uh, Paul the First really wanted to be part of that purchasing ordinance. Because our, our, this ordinance is just outdated and it makes uh, going up to bid just a lot, a lot more difficult. Than it really needs to be.
So we'll change uh at-home letter delivery from Peninsula Messenger Service to a ninety-some percent complete.
And we. Say ninety-five and, and barring any additional calls from residents who realize that they.
Yeah, we, we had, uh, we actually had Chacha, we had Charlotte Townsend, I call her Chacha, eh, she appreciates it. Um, delivered to City Hall so she could sign her form last week. The postal service refused to deliver her mail for a month, not us. The postal service. So again, I, I saw Congressman Panetta twice last week. I again reiterated that we sure would like some, some, some pressure on, put on our local post, post office to open. Again, on Sundays, uh, have the lobby open so people could retrieve their letters, cuz their, their, their hours are so restricted, but it's not in our hands, obviously, so. So again, on the purchasing, we'll, we'll add that in progress. But again, it's a really important, it's, it's, it's been hanging around for, since Max and I got here, so six or, six or so years, so let's, let's. Uh, let's move that one up, please, to keep it at number one.
You gonna ask us what we think?
No. Just, I'm trying to get that general consensus, not, just, just by, uh, you know, by, uh. Yeah, please challenge me.
From, from this chair, we've spent a lot of effort um updating ordinances recently. We've updated our waste ordinance, we've updated our sign ordinance, we're going to update our. Um, HR ordinance, which we talked about a few minutes ago, we're going to update. I see also on this list is updating our stormwater ordinance. And it's hard, it's difficult to, you know, stomach all the ordinance updating. When, you know, and I understand, you know, obviously we're working on climate change. Um, I see a tree ordinance up there. Um, I see an ADU ordinance up there, but you know, it's hard to stomach these uh ordinance updates. When the scenic pathways just fall apart. And, you know, like, just use that as an example. Um, you know, when a constituent comes to us and says, you know, what about the scenic pathway? I'm supposed to say, well, we didn't do the scenic pathway, but we updated our purchasing ordinance.
Yeah.
You know, that's not a very well-received message.
No.
And, and these things matter. And so, you know, I know that we, you know, I, I'm, I'm sure we need to do this. But when we go down this list and we see all these ordinances, it's just, um, it's really hard to stomach.
Yes, sir, I, I agree with you, and you hit the nail on the head. Some, uh, you know, uh, you know, AB uh, or thirteen eighty-three was a state mandate. So we had to respond again, ADU ordinance is something that we have to respond to. Um, some are, are obligations, some where you've had a body of case law, uh, the sign ordinance. Um, that has invalidated huge portions of our ordinance, including purchasing. So again, trying to follow state law. So I agree with you, you know, I used to joke about, you know, there are no friends of the storm drain system, and there aren't, you know. We do not get calls that say, hey, there was a storm and the water ran perfectly down that storm drain chip. Nice work. No. We get the calls that, you know, something's in disrepair, a maintenance issue.
Well, when you talk about the ADU ordinance, you know, the, my understanding of the ADU ordinance is that if we do not adopt our own ordinance. We are subject to state rules.
Correct.
Is the same thing true with the purchasing ordinance? So if we don't have a purchasing ordinance at all.
We, we do.
Uh, so, so let's say we rescind the purchasing orders is out of date. So let's say we rescind the purchasing ordinance. How would we do purchasing?
Well, well, first of all, we'd be, we'd be inconsistent with, with, uh, with our, our auditors would have, have a big issue if we didn't have a purchasing. Policy to follow, not to mention we wouldn't get our, our comprehensive annual financial award, which we love getting. Um, it just, it just would make uh, uh, doing day-to-day business um that much more cumbersome. So would we follow, would we follow state law or?
I guess I'm trying to figure out, you know, whether we, and, and maybe this is just a terrible example because we've been talking about this for so long. And so many years, but what happens if we don't update the purchasing ordinance for another year? Like, and instead we, instead we fix the scenic pathway or do something else? I mean, these are the questions we're supposed to ask.
Can you guys respond to, to, to that? I mean, I've, I've talked a little bit about, about the ability to, to bid, to, to do, be more, more efficient. Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll get to him in a second. Well, to, to bid more efficiently, um, so we can actually get projects out the door. Um, but what, how would, how would you respond to that question, Robin?
Our ordinance, I think, is nineteen ninety.
A little closer, just a little bit closer.
A bit closer. I think it's nineteen ninety.
It was the last update in nineteen ninety.
Nineteen ninety. So updating it, of course, prices at that time obviously were significantly different. So if we update it to reflect um more realistic pricing, it will make it more efficient. Because right now we have to write a, a purchase order for really every single purchase. Uh, the bid level really is too low. So if we are able to tie, uh, clean this up and make it more to today's pricing. And um, it will make us more efficient to get some of these projects done. So there, there is a, a benefit to updating. It's not, oh, just the fact that it's old and we're wanting to update it. It will make. Work throughout the city more efficient ultimately.
Right, um, for example, our formal uh bidding threshold is twenty-five thousand dollars. Uh, a lot of other organizations, it's thirty-five, forty-five, fifty thousand dollars, so that would expedite.
A hundred.
Well, it relative to our size, um, but it would expedite uh the, the bid process and. Help uh move some of these capital projects forward a- as well as, um, and even, and I know our city attorney can speak to this, even with. Our local purchasing code, we still do have to follow state law related to uh public contracting and, and uh. Um, uh, public resource code as well. So we're always up the, sort of looking at uh two standards, our local as well as the state. And making sure that there's not inherent conflicts between those two uh, uh, codes, the local and the state, which sometimes there are.
So it becomes a liability of not having an updated purchasing code. Yes, ma'am.
Is this something that we can contract to have it rewritten, or is this have to be our own staff? Because I hear exactly what Councilman Baron is saying, and I'm hearing it from the community. The community wants to see some results, boots on the ground, things that they can enjoy. These are paper exercises. Um, in-house staff, like you said, it's not very exciting. Uh, I won't use the term sexy, but oh, yes, I will. They're not things that people want to see. People wanna see some action right now. They're hungry for action. They're hungry for things that. Residents want. And, uh, you know, if we can do some of these things using a consulting firm. We ought to consider that.
Yeah, we're gonna get to the, we're gonna get to the HR um code, so right, Sam Zutler, who's our assistant city attorney, she's helping me with that. And as, when I say helping, she's writing it, you know, on our behalf, uh, and one of her. But how would you, how would you respond to council members, uh, uh, Felidos?
Um, well, if we followed our own purchasing code, the amount of effort to have to go out to find a consultant to. Uh, rewrite uh the purchasing code and then to also, uh, I mean, I'm, I'm. Being a little tongue-in-cheek, but it is true. It's, it's a, um, probably a more, more effort to hire consultant for this particular um exercise. Um, uh, Public Works Director and I also started some groundwork and I think reaching out to other organizations in some of the peer jurisdictions. Who have updated uh their code recently and then working with our city attorney and uh his firm uh would be much more um. Efficient in terms of time and dollars and customized to what we need uh for the village than hiring a consultant. There, there, Bob may be able to speak to some of the other, other ordinances um that might uh lend themselves to consultants.
If I may be blunt for a second, I don't know, Chip's going, oh, no, what's he gonna say? A lot of our ordinances are way out of date. Our policies are way out of date. Some of them are funny to read. Because we don't have the horse and buggy anymore. We need to update, and they, they're not sexy. They're absolutely not sexy. But I think the city has been uh putting these things off for so long. That's why we have thirty-year-old purchasing policies. That our ordinance that, it's so out of date, it's, it's tying our own hands. So yes. Yes, I, I, me personally, I would much rather see some uh physical thing done out in the street. But we need, these are the building blocks. We need to get these things uh updated. Stormwater policy or ordinance, as you say. It's way out of date. I, I fear the uh California Water Quality Control Board coming down on us at any time. Um, we, we don't have a choice. We have to get some of these things up to date. Do we have to do it this year or next year? Maybe, you know, that's, that's a good debate. But we, we are, a lot of our written stuff is way out of date.
Remember, remember, council, we just spent the last eighteen months kind of sheltered in place. And the public didn't get to see, even though the wheels were still turning, people, all these guys were, all these people were still coming. And still servicing uh the community and certainly our public safety and public works, and everybody was still working. Um, but, but, but now that we're coming out of the first phase of this pandemic, you're right, the public wants to say, what, what have you done? You know, we still have potholes, we still have maintenance issues, we still have a, a dead, dying and diseased urbanized forest, so what, what, what can you do for us? So my suggestion is that you balance doing some of those uh, uh, very highly visual projects. Along with the need to, to deal with some of these updates which have lingered for far, far too long. So if you'd like to rate that one, we 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 can do that. Uh, but again, we have, we have Sharon, that's got some capacity now to dig in on it. And, you know, hopefully, you know, uh, you know, by early next year, uh, we can get, we can get a draft in front of you. And again, we will certainly work with our city attorney and Brian's firm does a fantastic job on all all these things, very efficient and and knowledgeable. You know, this, the next one is. Develop a plan to ensure that the city's natural areas, as well as private properties are properly maintained to reduce fire risk. One of the items that you're gonna see on your November agenda is you're gonna see a report from Councilmember Richards and Councilmember Heiss. Who are your ad hoc committee on our our fire services contract? And you're gonna see a list of things that they would like your permission to approach the city of Monterey with. To add to the contract, we're we're on a carryover contract with Monterey Fire for Fire Services. And there's several things in there, including having Monterey Fire act in a more proactive manner. Uh, to reduce fire fuel load, both on our pub on public property, you know, the preserve, the Pescadero Canyon, all those, all our parks and things. As well as going on to private property and admonishing people when when need be, that they need to reduce their fire fuel load. So that will be one of the things, but it is a high priority. I mean, not just because it is all over the news and California is burning a million acres, but it's because of climate change. And again, changing conditions in our own village that may impact our vulnerability to fire. The other part that you're gonna see is a recommendation on paramedic, paramedicine services. And again, that'll be part of it, but that's not part of this this item. So again, I think that this is a public safety item. We talked about the factors, it's a very high priority um area, and it should remain um a level one priority unless there's any opposition. To a unanimous roll call vote. Thanks. Uh, the sign ordinance, I mean, you want to speak to that? It was unconstitutional, the pesky little first first amendment.
Yeah, and I think I think we can bump that up to essentially ninety, ninety-five percent done. We have one reading left in the city council. It does have to go to the coastal commission because it's under Title seventeen, so we have to amend our LCP. It's a really short amendment, easy to do, I've already talked to them, so they just have to get that on their books. It'll be effective immediately after certified by the coastal commission, but.
And Councilmember Felido had questions about um profane speech. And sizes, and I want to talk to you about, Brandon, when we come back for a second reading, maybe to have some graphics that show what a. You know, twelve by eighteen sign is and how it fits on a building or something like that. Is that correct, council member?
Yes, and I also want some um update as to how we can regulate by size of sign. I believe that is one of the areas we can regulate.
And the ordinance, the current ordinance does have sign size regulations in there, so we can certainly talk about that more if there's different sizes.
There's a table in there that shows the maximum size.
Exactly.
So unless there's any opposition, we'll maintain our our momentum on that item and hopefully. Dispatch with it, answer any questions, address anything by the end of the calendar year. I think that that's pretty what you said ninety-five percent or something done. Climate action and adaptation plan, I mean, we've got numerous staff members helping on this. Ad hoc committee, would you like to 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 speak to continue our momentum on this one?
Yeah, we're not an ad hoc committee.
I'm sorry. What are you?
No, we're a standing committee.
Standing.
You know, our goal is to be finished, you know, we'll have another council update, I think, at the beginning of January with where we are. After we have a um a public outreach workshop at our November meeting. Um, we'll have another update to the council in January, and then we'll have some sort of draft before the end of the summer. And then we'll present a final report after the, you know, sometime at the end of the summer. And then it will be up to the council to do everything we tell them to do. And which will surely cost a lot of money and involve a lot of controversy.
So you saw, uh, Bob talked about the contracts, you saw that in the city administrator contract log. Last Tuesday on your agenda, again, I have approved two contracts for, I think, up to, I think it's four personnel. In the private sector to help Anyas, to help us with some of these these projects. You know, this is the time of year, our annual stormwater report is due to the State Water Resources Control Board, District Nine, vicious.
Do this week.
Do this week, yeah, it's a brutal uh homework assignment and then all those other things. So again, I am listening to you and we, again, we are using contractors judiciously. But we 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 have to, we have no choice and um and there's no shame in in doing that. So, you know, we found the money and we're marching ahead. So unless there's any opposition, we'll continue our momentum on this item. Is there any members of the public that have come along, Sebastian? Nobody on Zoom, they're probably gonna watch it later and comment. Uh, the tree ordinance, um, Bob, why don't you, why don't you speak to that one real briefly, please?
Our existing tree ordinance is very outdated. The city attorney's office did a uh first draft rewrite based on some criteria that uh City Forester and I gave to them. Uh, we haven't had a chance to really go through with a fine tooth comb, so. There is a a draft of a new ordinance out there, and it's uh right now, I was sitting on a pile of other paperwork.
How would you characterize the um, how would you characterize the uh the modifications?
Wholesale, just so many changes.
Is it as protective of the the forested, the forest as it has been?
I'm sure it has been, I think it gives a lot more clear clarity to what is appealable from the city uh city forester. Or because the Forest of Beach Commission, what their authority is. Right now, we don't, sometimes they've been um imposing a fine of up to fifty thousand dollars. That uh we're not quite sure, to be honest, uh, that was uh. Um, might not have theoretically, might not have been a good thing. But that's part of, you know, part of that ordinance is to identify what uh. What authority the forester has, what authority I have, what authority our speech commission has, and what can and should be appealed, appealable to this, you got something, stuff like that.
It's a very, it's a very important ordinance for our for our city because of our forested nature. Trees are such an essential part of our character, yes, sir.
One of the other things on the CIP budget is the. Forest management, the forest master plan, maybe that was carried over from last year. Um, isn't that?
I think, I think.
Isn't that a CI, isn't that a CIP item somewhere? Yes. Is it on here?
Forest management plan is number twenty-seven.
Yeah, so it says budgeted, it's not a part of the CIP. Oh, that's great, it was in the, it was on the CFP list until we moved it into the operating budget. So it's a, it's earmarked funds for the operating budget.
This is like a gen, sorry, miss.
And the tree ordinance, and Bob is it more specific about definition of dead and dying? I mean, I've been getting some calls lately, approached by a couple of people at the CRA event on Sunday. That said that they felt that oak trees were being removed because they didn't have any leaves on them. And I I said, I don't think that's the case at all, it's dead, it's predetermined that it's dead, but.
Yeah, I don't know if the ordinance would do that. I think the forestry master plan was to identify what kind of ties in with the climate committee. What new uh trees should we be planting for the for the future? What kind of uh conditions we should impose on development when they come in and they uh. You know, modify a house or whatever, what kind of tree, the tree canopies, the tree density, I should say, is uh has been controversial in the past. So I don't know which which of those two documents would identify what constitutes a death of a tree.
Well, the forest management plan is more like a general plan where it talks about the broad uh broad policies of.
Right.
Of our forested nature and our character. Accessory dwelling, I'm sorry, oh, gosh, I almost missed one, the update zoning code and and design guidelines for both residential and commercial. This one, not just because I'm a planner by trade and training, if I can start, Brandon, please, this is just hugely important. Again, we have uh, we we we're receiving a lot of concerns about architecture. And development and redevelopment and demolitions, and it's it's really high time, both in the commercial and residential district. To um to revamp this, we had it on our on our CIP last year, we eliminated it because of the pandemic. I think we've got funding to hire an outside, some outside help um this year. But we really think that this one is is a very, very high priority area. You know, what what council member Felido was suggesting is, again, you could create an umbrella. Under which you could add a whole bunch of character, uh, character issues, this being, this being one of them. Regardless of whether you go that route or keep this. I I think you should keep this one as a as a standalone project, it's just, it's just very, very important. And I certainly would appreciate your your confirmation of that belief.
What do you think? So we have a version of the design guidelines that are twenty years old, and we would call that version one point O. What would be the version number of this update?
Can I take a swing at that?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I think I think I understand your question. I, are you asking, are we gonna throw this away wholesale from twenty years ago and start fresh? Or are we gonna build off of what we have right now? That's sort of what you're asking.
And I I think it's, I don't think the answer is one point one.
Yeah.
I think the answer is either one point five or two.
Yeah.
And I'm kind of interested in, I'm kind of interested in. What, I'm kind of interested in what that number is and and then I have another comment after.
Yes, I would, I said, thank you for clarifying the question a little bit, I would agree it's one point five, or it's it's probably in the one series still, if we want to get, maybe it's one point eight, I don't know. But it needs to go farther down the road than a one point one. There's some good bones in the design guidelines right now, they're twenty years old, though. I mean, there's things in there, you know, there's new materials that exist in the world that didn't exist twenty years ago. That are really good synthetic materials and things like that, that just, if you read strict guideline right now, they they can't be used. Shouldn't be used, there's, you know, guidelines are guidelines, they're not shells, they're shrewds. But um, yeah, I think there needs to be a pretty big revamp of the design guidelines. Now, going over to the zoning title, a zoning title is pretty good, it's more recently updated. I think that that if we call that one point O, it's gonna be a one point one or a one point two. I think the zoning title is in a lot better shape than the design guidelines are. My team's been keeping, since I got here, I asked everyone to keep a desk side log, and I've got like five papers front and back. Of things day to day, when we're going through the zoning title, you know, this doesn't work right, or there's a conflict somewhere, we're writing all that down. So we've been keeping notes for nine months of all these little tweaks that we need to make in the zoning title, so I feel, and the design guidelines too. So I feel like we've actually got a good start on that, we're gonna have to bring in a consultant. But to answer your question, the design guidelines need more love than the zoning title.
So, so I have two comments. One is that, just like the forest management plan, there are things that the climate committee is doing that will have a, that should. Have a pretty fat profound effect on some of the, some of the design guidelines and perhaps the zoning code. So there are, you know, we have talked about things such as, you know, vegetation in front of windows. And, you know, we've had presentations from um the AIA on, you know, fire safe building and and stuff like that. And obviously, we live in a forest and and so I think there's a lot of interplay there that I would ask you to incorporate this time around, so we don't have to go back and redo it. I think that the, I think that that material is out there, regardless of what Carrie and I and and the climate committee does. I think that material is out there and you can find it, and it's it's pretty easy to find. Um, and the AIA has been, you know, an okay resource um um for doing that stuff. The second thing I would, the second comment I would make is, you know, one of the reasons I raise objections to this when it happened. What at first, after I took office, was that there were meetings of, and and I've I've said this to Chip, and I think I've said this to you too, and now I'm just saying it out loud. There were meetings with uh community meetings that talked about the design guidelines. And those meetings were attended by architects and builders. And and what I heard was, you know, this process, I I think process is like this, need to be adversarial. And I think that there is a, I think for everything a builder wants to do, or an architect wants to do. There's the element of sort of community character that's weakened a little bit. And what I heard was a lot of pressing for, you know, like, one of the things was a relaxation of the. Volumetric requirements, so there were relaxation of volumetric requirements, you know, especially as it relates to how houses. Sort of drapes down the hill or don't drapes down the hill, there was some stuff about plate heights and and all this stuff. And and the net effect of what I heard was that the houses were going to get bigger. Or that there were, you know, these relaxing, these things were going to be relaxed. And what I didn't hear was a presence from a member, someone representing the community of Carmel. You know, and so there was a lot of pressure coming from, you know, coming from the building community to make houses bigger or do this or that. And there wasn't anybody looking at the other side. You know, what is this going to do? Like, if we allow glass, if we allow houses to have all glass fronts, you know, what is that going to do to the way that Carmel looks? Or the way that Carmel feels for for the people that live here and the people that visit here? And so my objection was that the community wasn't involved, and I know the community wasn't invited. But we failed, you know, as a team to get the perspective of of of. The the people that live here and visit here and whatever, as opposed to the homeowner, like the people that have to look at the home versus the people that live in the home. And that was a really big concern of mine, and so I would ask you, you know, when you go back and sort of restart this process or give it a little jumpstart. That you, um, you know, when you hire this consultant, that we make sure that we get the CRA or whoever it is involved, that we we figure out how to do that. I think that that's really important, it was missing the first time around.
It's it's a twofold role, one is to bring in, if there are, you know, look at Councilmember Felido, because it's it's double edged, right? I mean, if we bring in some from the outside, you're always gonna get critics in the community who say, well, we're we're different than. Pick pick another place, even wonder if how beautiful it is or something. The other, the benefit is, again, there are probably people having great ideas that we just don't know about. Maybe in California, maybe elsewhere, so again, we're gonna glean some good information um from them. So they're gonna be looking at what we've drafted or helping us draft things with the planning commission. And they're also gonna be focusing on education and outreach, how do we get people involved? And how do we get them into a room like this? And how do we synthesize the the information uh in in a format that they're, that they, that are, that's tangible, they can understand? But they're also able to very readily react to. So it's it's a, it's a, it's a unique character, and I think we've talked about Norrie Winter, who helped us with the Design Traditions Project twenty-five years ago. As a possible candidate. So again, if if it maintain, if it's maintained as a priority one project, well, we've got funding, we'll continue to get on it. Uh, Mr. Mayor, there is someone who uh would like to speak, I believe. Pardon me?
A phone number ending in seven, seven, if they want to unmute themselves. Star six, if you're on a phone.
There we go.
Go ahead, it looks like you're unmuted, phone number ending in four, seven, seven. They might be having some.
We give him an opportunity, I guess.
Okay, well, we're we're waiting for them, I do. Okay. I'll just.
All right.
Thank you for your, thank you for your comments.
Yeah.
What do you want to do about lunch?
Finish up on this item?
Yeah, yes, yes.
I just wanted to say that I think there's a big difference between our residential guidelines and our commercial guidelines. And we are contemplating a lot of different things in our downtown area. And I say contemplating very lightly, but an enhanced outdoor dining. Program would bring a lot of changes to our commercial district. Depending on whether, you know, there were bump outs, whether there were awnings added to buildings, lighting added to buildings. It would, it would involve quite a bit of uh thought and change as to what is appropriate downtown. So I think. It's probably wise to keep. The commercial guidelines a little bit separate from the residential guidelines, there's different challenges there.
There are, but we're hearing a lot, we're hearing a lot more critique about design details in the commercial district than we are in the residential district. So I I think it's really important that we not, that we, that we 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 follow through with dealing with. So I, I think it's really important that we not, that we, that we, we follow through with dealing with commercial design as well.
Yeah, and, and following up on that, we, and I know this is further down the line, but I think it's generic to this discussion is our planning commission is actually, the way it is right now, it's more reacting commission, reacting to a lot of housing designs and building designs. And they don't get a lot of time to do real planning, planning for the future that isn't in reaction to something. And I think it's vastly different when you do proactive planning that is not relative to a specific application. And I think we really need to look at that as a community and see how we can accommodate real planning versus reactive planning.
You know, one of the lower, lower level items in our opinion is the establishment of the design review board. So maybe if the person is back on, on the phone, Mr. Mayor, so maybe we could turn to them. But maybe when we come back from lunch, we can, we can, since it's in the same, same vein, Brandon, maybe we could talk about design review board, which again is going to take some capacity and it's going to take a pretty good level of effort to amend the code and get to the coastal commission. But it may, it may, it may free up the planning commissions to do that, that advanced planning, that looking forward, they're not able to do right now because of capacity.
It looked like Neil Cruz had unmuted momentarily. Neil, did, did you want to speak? It's like you're unmuted, Neil. Go ahead.
I'm like Neil not to say something. Well, maybe Neil can figure it out over lunch.
I, this is Carol Hall. I think he's having technical difficulties. Neil is. And as you know, can you hear me?
Yeah, Carol, we can.
Okay, great. As you know, we've started this village preservation committee to address the very issues that both Jeff and I think Bobby are talking about. And we really appreciate this coming up. We have an incredible groundswell of residents who are concerned with both commercial and residential design. And as you know, we've been collecting petitions. We have almost 400 now. And so we're really hoping that this design review board can free up, just as Karen says, free up the planning commission to do planning and look more proactively at design and help Brandon and others with the design guidelines. So bravo for bringing this up and discussing this. Thank you so much to all of you. And I think you should go to lunch now.
Thank you, Carol. Appreciate that. Alrighty, are we done with this topic here? All right, okay, let's take a half hour for lunch, come back at, let's say, maybe 12:40. Good, I'll take this as positives.
I think that I guess we'll keep going. And the next item after design review is the accessory dwelling unit ordinance. And again, unless we put our own fingerprints on state law, which we're allowed to do, you know, certain items, just like the sign of words, it's time, place and manner within some regulatory boundaries, then we're obligated to follow state law. So it's a relevant topic. Brandon, anything to add?
No, I think you really encapsulated that well. I think there's some really important aspects about the ADU law that we can make fit our village a little better, not having to defer to state law. So I do think this is important.
Give me, give me an example of.
So some things are if you have to defer completely to state law, you have to allow 1,200 square foot ADUs. You can, in your own ordinance, if it's adopted, limit it to, I want to say, 800 or 850. So we can control some size things. We can put in some design guidelines that the state does allow you to have design regulations for ADUs. So there's some nuances. And the fact that we have an LCP gives us some more, more leverage also for those regulations.
You know, Brendan and I have been talking about SB eight, nine, and 10 since they were passed and signed by the governor a couple of weeks ago. And we can talk about that as a separate topic about whether those will be appealing for developers or owners. But the fact that we can regulate an ADU on a 4,000 square foot lot to 400 square feet less than allowed by state law is a big thing. Because again, you get a, you get a 1,600 square foot house with a 200 square foot garage and you get 1,200 square foot house, there's no room for anything else. Don't worry about coverage. There's no room, there's no room for trees. There's no room for landscaping. There's privacy impacts. So again, I think that's a really, that's a really great example on how, how relevant this, this ordinance is and how we keep our fingerprints, some local control. Yes, ma'am.
Can you speak just real quickly about water vis a vis ADUs? That help us at all or hinder us at all?
It doesn't do anything to us different than it does to anyone else. So in order to have an ADU, you still have to prove that you have water. You don't have to add a new meter. So ADUs, you don't have to install a new meter, a water meter. So you have the moratorium to no new meters. That isn't required for an ADU. So you do have to show water credits though, basically. So if you can rebalance your credits in the house to be able to stick in a sink and a toilet and a shower, then you're okay.
Okay.
So you have to work, you have to get.
A limitation.
Correct.
Number of units.
You have a limitation in water. Yeah, and you can have, you're only allowed to have one ADU. So that's like a separate other attached or detached ADU
But council member, you're exactly correct. There is a limit on the number of fixture units. So water fixture units that would dictate how much or whether you can build an ADU.
Thank you.
I have a question. I'm looking at the thing above it, which is update the zoning code and the design guidelines. Do you know, is there synergy between like doing the ADU thing at the same time the residential design guidelines are open? Since we have both of these things and we will eventually be doing both of these things. Is that the right time or?
It's, it's sort of, it's a balancing act because ADU ordinance can take its own pathway. It has a lot of similarities in that it's in the zoning title, just like the zoning guidelines are. It will require an LCP amendment if we come to an agreement on what the ordinance is. So there is some wisdom in making it part of the zoning code and the design guideline update. It just extends the timeline. So we're, we're probably not going to see that project come, come to fruition for a little bit longer than it would take to just pull the ADU ordinance out on its own. So we need to just balance, do we think that the risk of having these 1,200 square foot ADUs without limitations being built is, does that outweigh doing it at the same time as the design guidelines and the zoning update?
Well, someone to your 1,200 square foot point, if someone with a, you know, a 1,600 foot house comes to staff and says, I want to put a 1,200 square foot ADU on it. Don't we have like setback restrictions? Like they have to be able to fit 1,200 feet into the lot that's available on, into their parcel.
Three, three feet on each side, 15 feet in the back, 15 feet in the front, or four feet in the back. So they're three feet on either sides and then 15 feet in the front.
So we have a 4,000 foot lot, which if you do the math on your, on your, you know, given what you said, is probably about 3,200 square feet, you know, in that building envelope is 3,200 square feet. And they're allowed to build, they're allowed to build whatever they can. The state ADU ordinance, is there allowed to build whatever they can inside that building envelope? That is, that's measured that way, right?
There'd be 3,000 square feet on a standard 4,000 square foot lot.
Yeah. So inside that middle 3,000 square foot, if they could eke out space. You know, my feeling, now I know we talked about this a little bit before, was that if you surveyed the 4,000 foot lots in Carmel and you specked out where the houses were on the 4,000 foot lots, the already existing inventory. You know, just, just went down Camino Real or go down Torres or go down, you know, Santa Rita. The number of houses that will be able to build an ADU inside that 3,000 foot envelope is zero. Like, because the way that our design guidelines work in practice is that with neighbors on each side complaining about, with neighbors on each side complaining about proximity to other houses. By and large, almost all of our houses are built, you know, this original 1,600 foot house is built in the middle of a lot. So there isn't space. Like I'm, I struggle, you know, I know that you, I know that this is important. But I struggle with, you know, what's left, you know, after someone comes and they build their 1,600 or 1,800 square foot house on this lot. Like how much space is actually left in that 3,000 square foot envelope on the side?
Yeah, second story. Second story. There's also, we have seen some development proposals of late for demo, demo rebuild of an existing house. And so once you demo the house, then, you know, the inclination is to push it forward, create your space in the back. So you have room for that 1,200 square foot second house, basically.
But my, you know, my thoughts on that, as I said before, were that that is a quirk that, that we have introduced. And that if you, you know, if staff, you know, there's no legal obligation for a house to be permitted the ADU necessarily at the same time that they're doing the remodel. So if, at the same time as they're doing the tear down. So if you require them to get the permit for the house first, and they go through the planning commission process first, then that house is going to be, you know, pushed to the middle of the lot and there won't be, you know, 1,200 square feet left for them. And I think that house that, you know, that we talked about a lot at the end of Camino Real. I think they manipulated the rules and I think that, you know, I think, and you know, and you know, I, I don't harbor any will. But I think that we let them do it. And I think that, I think that there was a, you know, they wanted to build a 2,200 square foot house. And I think that we basically let them do it and we had the tools at our disposal to stop it. But.
So again, if, if we can reduce it, that, that 1,200 square feet to, you know, 1,000 or nine or even 800 square feet, we're, we're opening up more, more area for landscaping, for trees, separating buildings, reducing privacy impacts. And that's again, the, you know, and there, there's a lot of 5,000 square foot parcels and 6,000 square foot parcels in the village as well, you know, a lot and a half from our original subdivision pattern, that there would be more space to build a full size ADU unless we regulate them through this kind of an ordinance.
You know, Ambag is trying to come out, I think in January, we get our arena numbers and that's the regional housing needs assessment numbers. And in the past where it's been sort of, oh yeah, we, we plan to do that. Don't bother us. The new rules coming down from the state are going to be a lot more stringent as far as communities' responsibility to provide affordable housing. So Brandon, you might want to make sure that you inform all of us in the community as to how much that is going to take your time too. Because I know the, the planning and building officials are being, you know, tasked with being part of that whole arena update.
Yeah. We've, I've been meeting with Ambag and other directors around the area monthly to talk about that. You're correct that the state is, is going to be more serious about making sure that people are making progress on the arena. But that still continues to be and has been not necessarily building units. It's, it's doing at least the study work. So we've got, we've got teed up, we've got grant funding to do our housing availability study. And that's really going to satisfy that first, you know, year or two of requirements. From what I've been talking with Ambag and some folks at HCD, I think we're going to be in really good shape as long as we're actually working on a plan. Where the state's going to start coming down on people is there are jurisdictions with up and down California that basically said, thanks, but no thanks. We're not going to do anything. We're not going to waste our time on this. And the state is, you know, giving some slaps on the wrists and things like that. But they're going to pursue, pursue legal action, I think, for those jurisdictions. That won't be us because we're going to be pursuing a housing feasibility study. So we'll still be doing okay.
It is a classic example of one size fits all bad planning, if you ask me.
Yeah.
That's what works in Fresno County, doesn't necessarily work in Monterey County.
Well, what we've been doing, just so everybody knows, since we're talking about this, we've been doing it, the planning directors forums with Ambag is crafting the methodology. So the way it works is the state comes up with a big number for a region. They dump that number on Ambag, Ambag then has to slice up that pie and hand it out to all the little cities and county areas. So what the planning directors have been doing in consultation with Ambag staff is developing that methodology. So things like availability of transportation, sea level rise, other hazards like wildfire, jobs availability. All those are factors in how much of that pie you get as a city. And so Carmel historically gets a smaller piece of that pie because of our limitations for developing affordable housing. We still are going to get some of the pie. You don't get no pie, even though you might not want pie. You're going to get it. You don't even get whipped cream on it. But the, the number, I think for us will be larger than we've seen in the past. But it's, it's going to be smaller than the region, for sure.
Looks like Neil Cruz might be trying to say something.
Thank you. Can, can you hear me this time?
Yes, we can. Very clear.
I'm got it to work. On the ADUs, I do a lot of work with ADUs and have been following the state regulations. Brandon helped me out on this too a while back at, at the county level. So Brandon's going to know more about it than me, but we also have the junior ADUs. And if my understanding is correct, a junior ADU can put, be put inside of a residence without the requirement of a new kitchen and without the requirement of a new bathroom. Now, what you would have in that case is a lot more parking because parking spaces are not required for an interior JDU to my knowledge. I do not believe parking spaces are required for an exterior ADU. So your parking is going to go through the roof. Second thought on all of this is that I, I know it's probably useless, but the, to see the state running roughshod over local communities and their zoning ordinances and their density standards to me is outrageous. And I, I wish that there was a countywide statewide motion to go back on the state and say, knock it off, or at least include us in the discussion. Last thing I want to say, because we left the issue of the design guidelines before lunch. There are, we, we have about 400 signatures of local residents in Carmel. That count is going up by the month. I just wanted to, to, to those of you who have remarked here that you're concerned, that there are many concerns by residents of, of seeing things change and they're very worried about it. To, to the residential community, the loss of village character is a huge, very high issue item on the list. That's what they say to us and the, and the signatures would suggest it. That's all for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Neil. Is there anybody else wishing to speak? Well, we've got the public forum open. I don't see anybody. Alrighty. Well, I've said this before, I, I think this ADU mandates the end of zoning as we know it from the local area. It's a Neil's issue about going ahead and getting the word out to legislators. We've done that to legal cities. It falls on deaf ears, unfortunately. The momentum at the state level is so emotional about housing that it really just kind of clouds the actual issue of planning and zoning communities like ours. So it's unfortunate, but the more we can do to get out there and get the message out, the better off we'll be, I'd like to think.
Along with that is getting in front of this ordinance and creating it so that we can put some parameters that better suit our city.
I just, yeah, I'm not, I'm, I'm not with Bobby on this. I don't. And it's not that I don't think, it's not that I don't think that these parameters are important for the city. It's that, you know, we've seen one. And I'm just, I'm not convinced at the cost benefit of this yet. I'm not, you know, I'm not, I, I wonder if we're fighting a fire that doesn't exist. I'm just, you know, I'm not.
You'll know when they try to build one next to you.
Yeah. Yeah, I will. I, I mean, I take, I take that, I take that a lot. I take that fine.
And that's exactly what it is. It's, it's, you know, it's, it's preventative, it's prophylactic to, to prevent unwanted development or development that we, we don't have a chance to regulate because we're following someone else's rules.
So can I add, just add to that really quick? Because there are, there actually have been more than one and we can bring back some sort of report next time we talk about priorities. But because ADUs on their own only require a building permit, there's no discretionary action on it. The only time that we see one go out in the public for, you know, a public hearing like the planning commission is when it's attached to a discretionary development project. So we have seen others through the planning department that are just construction of an ADU. They're not doing anything to the main house and it's just a building permit.
And where are they? Where are they?
Off the top of my head, I don't know. So that's why I said, we can bring back a report next time and tell you how many of those we've processed. But I know that we have processed at least two or three of those.
Yeah. What I would like to see is a list of the addresses and go check them out and see what's going on before I.
Yeah.
Before I, before I, before I give this a one.
Okay. Alrighty. Okay. So this one's kind of, I guess, held in a little purgatory. Organics and recycling ordinance, you had the first reading last week. I don't know, there's really much to add to that. I mean, you know, we just, we're, we're working on it and.
We, we do have some more work to be done. We have the negotiations with green waste. We have a franchise agreement amendment. Oh, then we have outreach and public education. Public outreach to do for years and then in two years from now we'll be doing enforcement. So the, the, the ordinance itself is done, but not the whole universe of issues related to it.
There's a significant article in the Pinecom last week. Mr. Miller editorialized on, on the topic as well. So it's again, it's a unfunded state mandate that we're, we're, we're reacting to. The next one is telecommunications ordinance consistent with federal.
I'm a little bit, if I may.
Yeah, no problem.
So, so going back to the ADU. So you've said you'd put it in purgatory because one council member thinks it's important and one council member may not think it's important. Isn't that one of the times that we would go down this list and decide what priority it should be?
Yes, sir. We certainly could. I didn't see the other three members. Either way, I mean, we were going to, we were going to get you some data so you can walk by them. We can visit them and see how, you know, how big they are and how they fit on a parcel. So I, I'm sorry if I moved on too quickly.
No, I, I, I don't know. I mean, I'm fine with moving on. I mean, with doing it at another time. I just wanted to get it clear to me what we're doing.
Mayor, Councilmember Tice, Felito, what, what's your, what's your suggestion on prior, prioritizing this one at this point in time? Or would you like some more data, beta prior to prioritizing?
I'll defer to the staff as far as time and importance on that one. I, I think we're going to have to deal with affordable housing one way or another. No one likes homeless camps along highway one. And it, unfortunately, we have problems in the state. And let's try to come up with as good a solution as possible in Carmel.
For me, there's, there's three kinds of homelessness in my mind. One is those that are homeless by accident. They've actually lost their job. A mother of two is in a car because she got divorced and her husband abandoned her. And that's just a hypothetical there. Then there are those that are homeless because of mental illness. And the fact that they don't have the facilities that we used to have, that's a failure of the government in my mind. Then there are those that are homeless by choice, those who think it's a lifestyle, it's acceptable for them. I don't think that providing housing necessarily solves the homelessness problem in my mind. It's maybe, it may feel good to say we're going to create housing, but the guarantee to get them a pathway off the streets and into housing is very vague in my mind. I think it's a sociological problem more than it is a housing problem, frankly.
When, and you know, SB nine, of course, does not require that any of the units in a multi-family development in a previously single family neighborhood be affordable. They obligate the, the, the property owner to live on the parcel, I think for three years. But they don't have to be affordable. So again, this is all, you know, this is the sausage that's being made and we're doing the research obviously on, on our own barriers to affordable housing and they better not be. You don't have any water, you don't have any land, you've got a height limit. They better come up with some, you know, we better find someone that's done this elsewhere, council member of Felido that has some novel ideas on how we address this issue. If, if it's a council priority, when we've come up with the conclusions. So, you know, Brandon's, so when you see a priority level, it really came from this group, the executive group through discussion. The lead, the lead recommendation came from the department head who would be responsible for implementation of the priority. So, so Brandon put a, you know, one associated with this one based on, again, here his concerns, our concerns about impacts on our village.
Well, because of the impacts in the village, in my mind, I'd prefer to keep it as a one.
Okay. So we won't, we took it out of purgatory. It's going to be remain a priority one. We'll get you the data so you can go by and look at the units that have been constructed. The, the next item that I have is telecommunications. Yesterday, we did receive the appeal from Verizon Wireless for the Carmelo appeal. You'll be seeing that on November 2nd. It has to go because of the shot clock, because of permit streamlining act, kind of data requirements. And so that's a good one, but we need to, we need to rewrite our wireless telecommunications facilities ordinance because it's sorely out of date, inconsistent with pesky federal law again. So what you have here is, I mean, we have a series of policies and laws that are inconsistent because they haven't been addressed. I think council member Tice talked about. We started with, with, with this moniker of rebuilding the foundation about, you know, four or five or six years ago, dealing with our infrastructure, but the fact is we also dealt with technology. Cause we're, you know, Bob's computer used to have the technology of a 1985 toaster oven. But we've gotten that, our software, working with the cloud. We've updated, we've rebuilt the foundation in creating positions that we need today and filling them. And we're working on that currently as well, obviously. And then the third leg of this obviously is our ordinances, which are out of date and inconsistent with, with, with federal and state law as well. And this is a clear example of, of, of the latter. Anything else, Brandon, on this topic?
That's good. I think you just look at it as a regulatory infrastructure. That's.
Right on. It's great. I like that. I like that.
I just pulled that out of the air.
Regulatory infrastructure. Smart kid. So, yeah, we, we, we really strongly recommend we maintain this was as a priority one issue. The next item is.
Yes, sir. So what I would say, what I would say to number 12 is I agree with, I agree with the priority one. Yes, sir. So what I would say, what I would say to number twelve is I agree with, I agree with the priority one. And what I would say to number ten is I don't. So I don't yet. So what I would say in terms of the overall priority is that you know, I would prefer that you work on item twelve before you work on item ten.
Alright. Are they in different houses? No, they're in the same house, the house of Brandon. So let's, let's talk about enhanced fire ambulance services. We talked about this in an earlier an earlier item, which is was fire fuel load reduction on both private and public property. And again, you'll be receiving a recommendation from the ad hoc committee on Tuesday, the second of November. Very important topic, not the least of which is our fire contracts expiring at the end of this fiscal year, June thirtieth. But more importantly, again, is looking at opportunities to better serve this community to, to create a higher level, a higher standard of, of, of public safety, both in param, paramedicine as well as fire service. So, I mean, that one in my mind very clearly and, and Chief, well, it, it should be, it should be celebrated and it should remain a, a, a priority one. We're getting Chief Euler up to speed and so he'll be able to opine and speak on it as well.
Do, do we expect a new contract with Monterey to be signed before the end of the fiscal year?
Yes, sir. Yeah, the reason that we, we're, we're, the timeline that we're on, I'm looking, we're looking for direction from you in November. So if there's any kind of meet confer that we have to do, we'll do that in December. But again, January first, we start, we start budgeting. So it'll be, you know, the end of this, this calendar year, we'll begin to, again, with your direction, reach out to the city of Monterey to negotiate, hash out the contract details and associate prices with the services that were requested. And we build it into the budget beginning in January. The next. Thank you. What's it called?
Filling vacant positions, which we kind of already talked.
Yeah, we kind of filled that one. That one's the, the obvious one. Work on that. So a good way to start today, we, you, you threw us off a little bit, but I think it was a really, really good discussion. And I'm, and I'm glad that you weren't just hearing me parrot what, what my, my department heads are saying. You got to hear it directly from them. So thank you for that exercise, council. For, Forest Theater Facilities Manager. So we do have an ad hoc committee, Mayor Potter and Councilmember Tice. Again, Councilmember Tice is quite busy, so we met with, with the the, the, the party that we'd like to lease the facility with on Friday. We're getting them some data that they've requested, but that one's moving along quite well as well.
And you were gonna reach out to the, the individual who spoke to the last council meeting and ask him what was going on.
Yes, sir, that happened.
Yesterday. Thank you.
So, yeah, that one is, is nigh to keep, you know, to, to, to keep, keep working on. Yes, we're down to stormwater ordinance, aren't we?
Janitorial RFP contract.
Yes, someone was weird ones. Bob, just get it done for crying out loud. Pandemic recovery. I mean, you know, that.
What about janitorial? Can we take that off the list?
Yeah, we're taking it off the list. Yeah. Yeah. Or we'll ask you again, as Bob said, we'll ask for a little continuance.
Dave has.
Get some more time. Pandemic recovery, obviously, we're working on that. If you've been to my office lately, I do have a hundred COVID nineteen test kits. So if you want to experiment or want me to experiment on you, you're welcome to come by. We do have a, a, a policy, I, I, I do have a, a vax, proof of vax mandate with our employees or, or a testing obligation. So I think that, you know, I, I mean, I think we need to be nimble. I mean, if there's a new variant, but I'm comfortable with, you know, removing that one. You may have seen the plexiglass in the hallway if you've been to City Hall lately. We did hire, I did, did purchase some, some plexiglass to protect the staff from a variety of catastrophes there. It's quite, it's bulletproof, it's quite thick. And so that'll be installed in the near future here as well, but I, I'm, I'm comfortable versus opposition from, from, from the team, my team or the council to remove, remove this one from the, the list. Maxine, any, any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm a little uncomfortable for the simple reason that we're not having city council meetings in public yet. And I don't see, I know that you are gonna provide an update to us. Maybe in November about how that's going. But I don't, you know, I'm not comfortable removing this until, and we could change it to in-person meetings, which I would be fine with, but that's, that's still, that's still an issue with me.
Yeah, I think, team, we forgot to talk about the council would like, I think maybe I briefly discussed it. Council would like to plan to return to in-person meetings and maybe in this kind of a format in this room in February. So, so I asked Joel at the break, the great setup that we have here costs about a thousand dollars. There probably would be some small capital expenditures so we can get, you know, here's our wifi from someone's living room. So we, we can get some bouncers or, I don't know, where, service enhancements to upgrade our, our facilities here, but this might be the format that we're in. It provides more seating for the public. We'll certainly still have a Zoom, a Zoom presence as well, but we could probably get in here in the near future. Ash, what am I, what am I missing on that?
Uh, yeah, so we probably could fit more people, public numbers than we could when we calculated it out at City Hall and getting people in and out was, was gonna be really tricky. The other thing to consider is the boards and commissions. So if this costs a thousand dollars a meeting for the council, you gotta factor, if you do one meeting for each of those a month, it's actually six thousand dollars because the boards and commissions are asking, when are we going back to being in person too? So that's, that's another thing to consider. And we meet at all different times of the month and all different times of the day.
Really good point. Thank you. Thank you.
So.
Okay.
So to the boards and commissions, you know, what is the feeling, you know? What does that look like? You know, in terms of what they want and I asked, I asked sort of that. You know, I'm thinking about the different commissions and the sort of public attendance at the different commissions. You know, varies a lot from community activities and, and to the Harrison Memorial Library Board to Forest and Beach to the Planning Commission. So what do the commissioners think?
Certainly a question that we can ask the commissioners what they think about it. I can speak to the library board and the Community Activities Commission, which is they'd like to be in person again, especially the Community Activities Commission. Now, what it looks like is it would probably look very similar to this. You, I would think you would for sanity's sake, want to keep things standardized across the board for how we're running meetings. And if we do go back to in-person with the council, does that mean we still need to keep adopting the resolution every thirty days just so the boards and commissions can continue to meet on Zoom? Cause that's another piece of this too, that needs to be specified legally. And I turn to Brian for more advice on that. But yes, if you were gonna determine only the council and the planning commission are gonna be meeting in person from a cost perspective, then you still need to probably be doing that thirty days extension for us meeting in Zoom.
And I, I think the planning commission did not want to meet in person again. Is that correct?
That, that was what they said, you know, a month or two ago. I would definitely want to poll them. I don't want to speak for them here. And same thing with our historic resources board, I'd want to poll them.
How about Forest and Beach?
Forest Beach wants to meet together, absolutely. And I don't know, you know, it may be that this room is, you know, that the chambers are big enough for Forest and Beach. I mean, it may be that attendance is small enough for the commission so that it would work in the chambers. Um, especially like I'm thinking about the planning commission where people tend to, most people tend to come in and out for their hearing. It would be easier for them to wait outside than, you know, maybe the attendance of a council meeting, which, which in the past has drawn more people at once.
No, we'll take a look and we'll.
Brian, did you, Brian, did you have something you'd like to say?
No, I think Ashley raises a good point about the fact that you are required under AB three sixty-one to renew your findings every thirty days by a resolution. Now, query, can you bifurcate your resolution so that you designate which bodies will be allowed to teleconference under three sixty-one and, and which will not? And I, I'm gonna need, I'm making a list here to look that one up for you because I don't believe the the code itself answers that question as to whether you can be half in and half out. But I'll find out. And I'll let you know.
Thanks, Brian. Appreciate it.
Okay, so we're gonna, we'll get you a little report, may just be verbal in November with our findings and we'll poll the boards and commissions and keep this one on. And then the next one again is a stormwater ordinance, which is sorely out of date. I think we've got some help on that one.
It started, we do have a consultant working on it. It's something that's out of date, has to comply with current.
Yeah, Clean Water Act, the Federal Clean Water Act, National Marine Sanctuary.
ASBS, we have the.
Areas Special.
That comes with some pretty heavy penalties.
Yeah, very, very heavy penalties. If we, if, if I would pour this water in the, in the bay, it'd be an illegal diversion. And I think, I think that was volunteer group oversight. It's miscellaneous. So again, I think, I think Bob put it on there, we put it on there as a capacity, but we can, you know, something we're gonna do, it's routine in nature. You know, when, 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 when you were talking, council member, about having the various in a sundry groups, you know, the way I was thinking and I, I'm just, I'm just spitballing here, but again, if you had multiple people in public works, if you had an analyst and if you had the city forestry and you had Bob and you had someone like an Anya's who's environmental programs, if you split up those groups a little bit. So each, each, each staff member had a couple. And I haven't even talked to Bob about this, quite frankly, but I'm just, just throwing this out there. But again, if you had divided and conquered, obviously, there'd be a lot of cross, cross communication as well. But it might provide, you know, a little bit more relief from having just one staff member interfacing with all the groups. So anyway, just something to think, to think about, but we still need a couple more staff members to have that work.
Okay, so we have gone through twenty-five projects, number one priority projects. We've deleted one, but it still has to be done. So my question to the staff at this time is, I have a couple of questions. Can they all get done in this fiscal year? Is there any staff capacity to do any other projects? Because if that's the case, we really don't need to move on. Or we look at the remaining projects as when we can get them done in the future. So that's what I'd like from staff now. Is there any more capacity after?
Well, so with the first question, the first question is, you see by a show of hands from the staff. With the existing projects that are priority one, can we complete them in the next eight months?
And the CIP project?
And the CIP. How about just, how about just the, how about just the, the priority projects without the CIP, Bob?
I think we would be struggling to get these done in the next eight months.
And so when you add the, when you add the CIP, it'd be that much more of a struggle?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, council member.
Well, remember, staff came up with what they felt were the number ones. So that's all we've actually looked at outside of the CIP. Maybe there are some things down here that might jump.
Do they have the capacity to do anymore?
Well, maybe something that they judged a one would move down. I don't think we've really looked at.
I thought we just all concurred that these were ones.
Well, the staff suggested these.
Except for the one, except for the one, right, the ADU.
Here's another summary. Of those twenty-five projects, four are in finance, five are in community planning and building. Three are in public safety and twelve are in public works.
Well, CFPs have it.
Yeah, and that's.
You know, but I would say, Carrie, that the projects that are in public works that are big, you know, that are big you know, big ticket items are complicated are, would be mostly solved by them hiring this project manager, right?
Right. I agree, but in order to address any other projects, it has to be contingent upon staff hiring or looking at it in the new fiscal year. Or, you know, adding more projects to their list doesn't mean it's gonna get done. And what are the chances of it being addressed? I'm just looking at it from a staffing issue.
Let me clarify, as of today, on the CFP pack that we have today, one project manager for two years would knock off the list. So if we had any additional projects in next June, July, now it's even further to the back, unless we increase capacity with the second project manager like years before, or we could hire, hire consultants to help. Like I just, I think the thing that I'm having trouble with here is that, you know, when I look at the list and like number or something, something a little maybe on the next page is decommission the well and tank and Mission Trail Major Preserve. And it's just high level of effort. Like, what does that mean? That Bob's gonna go out and dig out the tank himself?
Yeah, it's not, it's not the physical, it's not the physical work, it's the regulatory. So, you know, when you're, when you're in a stream bed, when you're in an ESHA, when you're filling a well, there's just a litany of agencies that you have to go through to, to fill it with. It has to be done, filled correctly and, and properly, cause it could cave in. So it's, again, you talk about a non-sexy project. This, this is at the top of the list, but, but it is, it's a, it's a safety hazard because of the tank. Kids climbing on it, it's rusted out, they fall through, they're not gonna drown, you know, it's not that deep, but, but it's just this, it's, it's been there for forever.
It's similar to a few years ago, we got rid of the fuel, the fuel tank and the public works yard. Because of the ongoing maintenance problems as well as regulatory issues that kept growing. Same thing with this well, where we wait.
And all tanks, all tanks leaked and that one leaked and we had soil contamination and we had to remediate that. And it cost twice as much as we expected. Yeah, we're better off, we buy fuel commercially, but we don't have that, that kind of thing hanging over us. This is the kind of thing that we, we, it's been an appendage we've carried with us for so long, there's just time to excise it and get it over with.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm, I'm just struggling, you know, I printed out the, the fund balance sheet, you know, from the budget book. Which shows that our proposed fund balance at the end of twenty twenty-two is, you know, fifteen and three-quarter million dollars. And, you know, we don't need to have that much money and we've got this list of projects. And we've got things to do. We've got, you know, some amount of money to spend.
Your fund balance again is also our working capital.
I understand.
Okay, okay.
Understand. But fifteen million dollars, fifteen and three-quarter million dollars is, you know, seventy percent of our budget.
You did increase, which I think was very wise. We supported very much you increasing our, our, our reserve to fifteen percent of, of general fund this year. That's a step in the right direction. I mean, that's fiscally very prudent. But, you know, again, that's why, that's why we're more comfortable than, than ever coming to you and saying we need help. You know, and, and if there's anyone to blame that we waited too long, it's me, cause I was just too conservative. But we are gonna come to you and say we need more help, both in contract work and in, in, in employees. And, yeah, we'll, we'll try to find the employees that have the knowledge, skills and abilities to, to best serve, best serve.
So what is our preference then? Do we want to go ahead and have for additional discussion on these or do we want to wait a little bit and come back on this list? I mean, there's obviously some things out here that are important to get done. We've been kicking the old Flanders property around forever. We've been discussing the Scout House forever. Mission Park has not been discussed, should be added to the list. A lot of these are discussional items that don't necessarily have immediate work associated with more long-range planning items. But I hate to see some of them completely drop off our radar. That I think Carrie's point that you made, this meeting started that, kind of silly to have this discussion in vacuum when we don't know where the staff's gonna come from and what we're gonna do to increase our capacity. So it's kind of a, they, they're on the list, we know they're on the list, but I'm still comfortable with one through twenty-five, I guess it is now.
And we could, you know, we can, we can come back in the new year, Mr. Mayor, we can come back, you know, on January fifteenth and tell you where we are vis a vis staffing. I mean, I tour people in Flanders Mansion once every two weeks. I mean, the mayor and I were there last Thursday with, with the guy, Dr. Felido. Karen's other half talked to me about starting an advocacy group for Rio Park, which we've owned since nineteen eighty-six. He talked to me on Sunday about that. So again, there's a lot of interest, volunteer interest, and we've got a lot of things, we just, you know, i- 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 but, but you shouldn't think that adding staff is gonna be a panacea, because it's just, it's just not going to. We, we, we're still gonna have to make very hard decisions about how to prioritize our. We, we're still gonna have to make very hard decisions about how to prioritize our, our level of effort, even with the increased staff that I'll be proposing. Yes, ma'am.
I want to make a pitch for moving beautification efforts up. This has sat stagnant now for over a year, a year and a half. And we need it. We really need it. Our downtown is shabby looking. And we need to step it up. It seems to me that part of our ongoing contribution to the hospitality community should be to make the downtown look great. And that one, I don't want to see languish down here if we can possibly move that up. And whether that takes a contract with a landscape company to get it done, I think it's well deserved.
Using newfound monies we had.
Yeah.
Somebody earlier today was, have foresightful enough to say perhaps we could use some of that Parkland money for that kind of very thing that you just mentioned.
Exactly. No, exactly. That's what. What money? I'm sorry, what money?
The money you're using for your condo fund.
Well, why don't, you know, we take a few minutes to, maybe each of us should decide if there's three or four projects that we really feel are important, that we need the staff to consider. Now, that doesn't mean it has to be done this fiscal year, but, you know, if there is some capacity that they would, you know, take a look at that.
I, I, I can, not that I gotta vote, but, but I can support that idea. And, and those are, hopefully, if you come up with three or four, and we'll add that to the consider list for when we come back. And again, I'm happy to, we're happy to come back in January and talk about this again. It'll be a good tune up. Right? Get through the holidays and, and tell you where we are, how much progress we've made, and get some more staff under our belt, hopefully, and and see if we can't add some of those things back in as, as higher priorities.
Well, how do we want to do that? Then we want to take a ten minute break and go through them ourselves, and then from back, and then have discussion. So your suggestion, Chip, is that we find each of us come up with five, say, let's five supplemental projects that we could put in there for consideration.
Yeah, five's a lot, you know, you know, I'm thinking two or three, quite frankly, but if you come up with five, that's fine as well.
All right, let's do that. Let's take ten minutes then.
Okay.
All right, Brandon, why don't you bring us back to action here?
I know. We almost had it.
So do you want to start on one side of the diocese?
Let's figure out here, Jeff, Jeff, let's go ahead and figure out what we had for priorities. Start with my right, I guess. Carrie, do you want to pick out your four? How many do we have?
Two and a half.
Are we starting with me?
Yes, ma'am.
My issue that I'd like to bring forward is street addresses. And Sharon has gotten a lot of feedback on that, on when it comes to mail delivery. I've gotten a ton of emails on this issue. And I think it can be done in a Carmel way by having your little cute name and just right under the street address. So the planning commission would have to help us with that.
I'm saying, could I just ask, would that be also including the issue of mail delivery or just street addresses?
No, I think mail and delivery is a bigger, is a separate topic for me. I think just getting through street addresses would be the first. Mail delivery has to do with the post office and those other issues. So I don't want to quite get them involved yet. I, I think we just need to be cognizant of the street address for safety reasons. And safety reasons more than just public safety. But during the pandemic, people got their prescriptions delivered to the wrong house, that stat for a week. Or two, I mean, it's just, we're, we're at the point where we need to address that issue.
Just in case anyone's playing strategic priority bingo at home, that's number thirty-one on the list.
Yes.
Do you have two others, council member?
I'm open to others. So I'm, I, that's, that's my, my number one. So I'm just going to add one to the list right now.
Thank you. Yeah. I have sort of two and a half. My first priority is reading the statement of the designer review board for reasons that I've harped on for about three years now. Because I think we need to do more planning. Explore street addresses is on my list, is on my list as well. My comment on that is.
Which one was that, Jeff?
Street addresses.
Okay, okay.
My comment on that is, I don't think, you know, I don't think it's possible to have street addresses without mail delivery. I think that, you know, my experience ordering, like, you know, to use Carrie's example, ordering stuff online is what will happen when we have street addresses is people will use them. And some of those things that are going to get delivered are going to get delivered by the post office. The way that online companies deliver things now, the way that they have, like, I have things that go to my P O box. And so the second we establish street addresses in town, we will need to have mail delivery is what I think. I don't, I don't think, I don't, I just don't, I think not having mail delivery would be a big, would cause tremendous problems with things being sent via U S mail, once we have street addresses. And so I'm in favor of that, but I really think it needs to be taken to the end rather than sort of stopped halfway, as it were. And I do have a sort of a pet project, which is underground the power lines in partnership with P G and E. I would ask, I would ask for a little rope from my council members. We all got this letter from Gina, this email from Gina Arnold last week. And I would like to simply set up a meeting with perhaps me and Chip and Gina and maybe one or two other staff members to sort of explore the boundaries of what P G and E is offering us. And if they don't, if there's nothing on offer, if this is just a P R stunt with respect to, yeah, we'll underground your power lines and it's still going to cost you three million dollars a mile, then we'll just turn around and say no. But on the off chance, we'll just turn around and put the project back on the back burner. But on the off chance that there's real money at stake, I would sort of be interested in knowing what it is. And just, just doing a little bit of exploration and then reporting back to the council before we go any further with that. So that would be my, that would be my tiny little ask.
And I think, I think we talked about it yesterday, Councilmember Felito and Bob and I are supposed to meet with Gina Arnold as well about the service connection to Flanders through the preserve. And, you know, we should probably talk about a potential conflict, council member, on that because you live on the preserve, in the preserve. But, but certainly something we can explore again. This is P G and E saying because of the problems that they've had with their, with their shut off. And then when they turn the power back on it, it arcs and causes massive fires. So they're looking at undergrounding a lot and spending some money. So we can certainly.
Yeah, they said, and the email said, the email to the council, the five of us said that they, they're really only interested in the very high fire zones, like that's what I read into it. And only a third of Carmel is in the very high fire zone. And I, and that disclosure, I happen to live in, in that third, as does Karen, so that may be another conflict. But.
Well, Pescadero is another one. There's a, there's a main line that goes down the middle of Pescadero.
Yeah, it's the outskirts, it's the north and it's the eastern part of the city and the northern part of the city that are in the high fire zone. So I would like to just set up a meeting with Gina and see if there's any there, there. And if there is, then we can bring it back and talk about what there is. And if there's not, then that'll be sort of the temporary end of it.
Add to that conversation, when Jeff and I talk to the public about climate change, this issue comes up all the time. So I think it's incumbent for the city to communicate what it takes to do that. And what I'm saying for this underground utilities point, layout, if people are interested, this is what it takes. These are the steps, because we do have one neighborhood that's doing it. So that people can then make an informed decision. And I think that's part of the communication. I would definitely support looking into it. And then having the staff say, this is what it needs. If you're truly interested in this, this is what's available and this is what it takes.
No big deal.
Yeah, I think, I think to Carrie's point, it's certainly possible that, you know, any sort of program that might be sort of initiated, sponsored by the city, might be a property, a homeowner, a property owner program and not a citywide sort of undergrounding effort. I think that's, that's an entirely possible outcome from this. So I think we just need to poke at it a little bit.
Well, Bob and I will do that. Yeah, I mean, you know, certain, certain communities self-assess. Property owners for neighborhoods or streets or blocks or what have you. And they pay for the, not just the lateral runs to the individual houses, but for the, for the main, main line as well. And again, there are some lines that because of the voltage, they can't be undergrounded, just too, it's too high voltage. So anyway, good ones. Thank you. Thank you, council member. We'll look into it.
So you know, I'll, I'll set up a meeting with Gina and then.
I T has a hand up.
Is there, is there someone on Zoom that'd like to speak? We think we might have seen a hand up or a microphone. Ending in five eight, phone number ending in five eight, star six, unmute your device.
We're having difficulty hearing you. All righty, we'll come back if you'd like to later. Thank you. All right. So Karen, your thoughts?
Yes, since you only did a couple, I have five.
We've reserved the right to have four.
Actually, I concur with Carrie about addresses. I get a conversation all the time about the difficulty with credit cards, with securities, with all kinds of things, not having a physical address. I believe that Ashley mentioned one time that the voting people in Monterey County have physical addresses assigned for most of us. So I don't think this would be rocket science to do, and I think it would solve a lot. Beautification, got to do something about beautification. People are tired of dried up dead plants downtown. Sea wall survey, I think, is something that if we don't do it, it would be penny wise and pound foolish because we do not want our sea walls to collapse because we haven't done a survey each year when the sand is.
Is that a C I P, Bob?
Yes.
That's a C I P. That's, that's happening.
That's already happening.
But don't add, don't add another one.
Okay. All right.
You should have waited until after the list was done.
I, I do.
Block, block it off, get me out of my misery.
I do want to see some sort of determination about those barriers along scenic. If Carmel cares, wants to do them and can do them, I think that's something that should go ahead. And then I desperately think that the public works department needs full-time administrative onsite help because they are getting hundreds of phone calls all the time. And they need somebody right there that can help them out. So those are.
Good ones. Thank you, council member. Thank you.
I would add a lot more.
Full-time administrative help and public works.
Public Works Department, because they only have a quarter person who is not onsite. And that is not adequate for the number of calls that they get through forestry and public works.
So again, as I said, well, I'll come back to you with staffing plan in December.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, these are in no particular order. I'm glad to see I concur with a few. So increasing beautification efforts is one of them, not, no order. And reinstatement of the design review board. Right. And where is the other, this explores street addresses.
So those are great. Yeah, we, we have a couple now that have multiple votes, don't we, Brandon?
Yes, sir. Street addresses actually showed up in four out of four so far.
Four so far, great.
So I, continuing with the unity that's going on at the moment, I concur on the increased beautification efforts. The scenic pathway barriers, if there's a way to get those done with Carmel cares, expeditiously to support that. And I also believe that what I heard earlier was that the scenic road sewer line replacement isn't really our project. There are some coordinations going to go on anyway. So I don't think that's anything that needs to be on the list necessarily, just something we'd collaborate on. Let's see, the undergrounding of the power lines, I concur on. And then the explorer, the opportunities of Flanders Scout House and Mission Park. I'd hate to see those drop off if somebody comes along that's interested. We've got the template for the Flanders Mansion Scout House. We've had multiple discussions with if somebody comes forward in the near future with an effort, I think we should look at that. It's been, it's an underused asset. I said, I do, I think I said, very strongly support the design review board reinstatement for the very reasons that have been mentioned before. That is it, I think.
Yeah, the mayor, well, the mayor obviously gets a couple more than the rest of you.
I'm deciding my support.
I concur about design reviews since I took one of mine off my list.
Brendan, Brendan, talk to us briefly about the, the process that you've envisioned re-establishing the designer review board, please, would you?
Yeah, so if that's, if that's where we go, it requires a amendment to our code. So when we did have the designer review board and I looked this up, we still have a copy of the code section in hard copy in our office. It, it was, it was implemented through our zoning title. So it laid out the whole process, just like right now, it does lay out the process for the planning commission, what their roles and responsibilities are, appeals, all that stuff. So think about reinstating all that language back in. Obviously, we have language that we can use that used to be there, but it's going to be twofold. One, looking to see if there's anything we want to do differently than we used to do with the designer review board. And then also making sure that we don't create conflicts because this planning commission took over roles and responsibilities that the D R B used to have. So we'll have to make sure we strip out anything that the planning commission is doing that we don't want them to do if the D R B gets initiated. Other things we're going to need to consider, there are projects that would require a design review, but also require use permit consideration. So the planning commission would still be conceivably your use permit authority. But if you have a project, like a great example is the Colonial Terrace Hotel. That was a recent project, had a design review component, but it also had a use permit consideration. So then we would have to think about, are we splitting those? So now someone's going to have to go to the designer review board and the planning commission and the H R B, because that one had to go to the H R B as well. So you've got an H R B stop, designer review board, planning commission for the three different entitlements along the way. Or do we want to perhaps give the, when there's a use permit attached, then the planning commission retains the ability to decide on design review? So those are the kind of considerations we're going to have to think about, how we want those two boards to interact with each other. So and then that's a zoning title amendment, L C P amendment.
This sounds like a great project for you.
I've got nothing to do, so I'm very excited about this. Finally, thank you for giving me something to do.
Yeah, you know, the, I think, I think one of the biggest challenges again is sometimes all boards and commissions, not just endemic to us, but they, they, they establish a little bit of a fiefdom. And we have that a little bit right now with the H R B and planning commission roles and responsibilities as interpreted by the, by different people reviewing our codes, our laws. That said, again, we're going to have to really clearly define when an item is H R B, design review or H, H P C, H R B, whatever, planning commission. And whether, I mean, going to three different boards and commissions and their roles can really, can really be conflicting.
And forest and beach, if you have a tree issue.
So it's going to take some, it's going to take some work. This isn't a snap our fingers. And this would be an L C P amendment that would have to go to the coastal commission.
As you, as you know, having come from Monterey, that process exists in Monterey where they have the architecture review committee, then the planning commission. I think that model works really well. It was thirty-six years ago that my career took a deadly turn. And when I ended up on the architecture review committee in Monterey, quite a while ago, and it's been kind of tortured ever since. So I, I don't think it's that difficult to reinvent.
If, if anybody's interested, I have the original, when Mayor Potter left, he was a architecture review committee member, I think in nineteen eighty-eight, I've got the typed, his typed notes on how to make the process more efficient in my office. It's a, it should be in the archives, it really should be, such a good document.
Yeah, I served duly after a while on the architecture committee and the planning commission. For a few months. Just, just before I go any further, as far as the street addresses things go, I don't think that, I agree with Carrie a hundred percent that having the discussion about mail delivery is a totally different third rail. Because I was speaking to Carmel Women's Club the other day and of the hundred plus people there, there were attendants. I asked, I said, how do you feel people about mail delivery? Would you support mail delivery? How many people held up their hands? Only three people in the entire crowd held up their hands. So I think it is a little bit dangerous. So that's just my. Addresses with, I didn't really go there, but I don't think that's as controversial as having gang mailboxes on street corners or the possibility of some mail theft going on, which happened, my, my ex-wife had her identity stolen a few months ago when she, somebody just simply taking her mail out of her mailbox.
Well, I think that part of the street address conversation is touching base with the post office and seeing what effect that might have, but.
One of the common concerns was that we're surrounded completely on three sides. On one side by the ocean, but on the other three sides by areas that have delivered, the mail delivery done. And there, there are no post offices. We would lose our post office was a concern.
Right.
Based on the fact that the other one operates out of the mouth of the valley. The convenience and the custom care that we get here would be compromised, I think.
Yeah, we don't want to lose our post office. I think that's. One thing that I think we need to consider in the near future is the police department project in terms of, it's, I know it's not on the list, but there are some intangibles when you talk to the police chief here. And he's a new set of eyes, he can give us some feedback on what we feel this police department project would be and how important it would be. And part of it is how proud are we of the police department? When you've got a hole in the ceiling, when you have equipment and A D A, maybe even OSHA issues. So, you know, I think this council needs to address that issue. So I think we need to take a look at that as well.
I'd ask now, is there anybody in the public wishing to comment in any of the discussions they've heard from council?
If, if I may, real quickly, Mayor, we, so the, the P D remodels, it's, it's, it's bid ready. It's, our estimate's one point four four million. And it's on the twenty-three, pardon me?
It's in year two of the C I P.
Yeah, so it's in year twenty-two, twenty-three C I P at this point in time.
So I, I would support that. I think, you know, I, you know, that seems to be something that we need to do in the next year or two. You know, as I pointed out before, we have this money in the bank. You know, I think that that's a good use of, a good use of some of that money to just get this project done. You know, for, for all the reasons that Carrie said.
Ready.
Wanted to add for the street addresses, another component directly affects the city. For instance, in order to receive our Biden bucks, we had to prove a physical address. Well, of course, we don't have a traditional address. So they required us to get a notarized letter by Chip saying, yeah, yeah, we are the east side of Monteverde. And I do foresee that happening more and more on various grant funds. So that's another component for us to receive.
We were tempted to make up an address, like, you know, three thirty-one Monteverde Street, but we, Robyn's the girl scout, we went, we went her route first.
All righty, is there anybody who wishes to speak? Dale?
Yes, Dale Byrne. First, I'd like to vote for the admin for the public works department. They desperately need it. And playing off the help for volunteer groups, just having that would be a huge assistance to us because I know they're spending time trying to prioritize hundreds of calls. So I think that's sort of something that just should be done. In terms of beautification, you are, you know, we have a lot of those active projects already. We're, we're going to be finishing up the plaza at the police station. We're going to be, once, once Brandon and I get together, we're going to be replacing all the map cases that are deteriorating around town with really beautiful mahogany ones. We're going to be redoing the Art Holman Corner that I'm working with Sarah and her husband on. That's at the south, the parking lot right here, because it's badly in need of beautification. We've been, we've been told historically to sort of stay away from downtown because it's, it can get to be interesting. But we're certainly willing to do things there. We've already cleared the medians and gotten some of the riffraff out. But as soon as we're told to, to start working on that and we can, then we will. And that doesn't require anybody's time really, other than a little bit of Sarah's time, because it's pretty basic what we need to do. I'd like to make sure that, that getting a new street sweeper gets on the list. I've been out cleaning streets and I, I know what goes on with that machine that we have and it's not good. It's embarrassing and it's expensive to repair. So I just think it's a no-brainer. And if you need help raising funds, if you want to do a matching fund, we could help organize that. I'd really love to see us get a street sweeper by the first of the year. I mean, I'm serious about that. So if that could at least get put on the list and, and let's have some conversations, because I think a lot of people in town would help pay for it. All right, it's a big deal. And finally, there are some other improvements for some of the buildings that were on there. The Forest Theater needs house lighting and so on. And Ken, Ken Smith and I are working on funding that. I know we have to wait till after the manager's chosen, but once that's done, we're going to be doing some things, whoever it is. And I've always been interested in the Scout House and the offer still stands personally to help out on the, at least the design phases. It's, it's not an easy one, what to do, but we'll help with that if you want us to.
Since the street sweeper is on, that's on the replacement list for twenty-two, twenty-three as well. But, you know, we love private partner, private public partnerships very much. What do you, what do you estimate, about a hundred eighty, two hundred thousand dollars? For a sweet sweeper?
All right. So Brian, what are your synopsis, where you think we're going now?
Well, I can do this with Chip. The mayor did ask me, didn't he? Um, I wish he'd asked you. So where we're going next, where staff's going to go away, we're going to take a look at staffing. We need to come back to the council. I think we talked about January as the timeline, you come back and talk about staffing, or is that?
No, we're going to, we're going to come back with a request for additional staffing in December.
December, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. But part of that, we need to weave in these, these priorities we've been talking about and start to give an idea of how long each project will take and how much staff time will take up if we actually get all that staffing. So it sounds like we'll come back with a re, a refresh of this list.
Yeah.
In December, January timeline.
And what we heard get pulled up was looking. And what we heard get pulled up was looking at street addresses, not at home letter, not at home gang mailbox delivery.
Actually took notes on that.
The D R B.
D R B, underground power.
Underground power.
Beautification.
Beautification.
Scenic pathway barriers, public works needing a full-time admin.
Yes, and staffing.
And Flanders Scout House in Rio Park.
Yeah, so, yeah, I mean, and, and again, I, the mayor and I, I tour people at Flanders all the time. I knew a lot of the staff do. It, it, it's a process that we went through a couple of years ago and the relationship did not work out, obviously. It is, it is a little bit intensive. You know, what we've had, we, we get a lot of, you know, with no disrespect, we get a lot of larks. We got a lot of people who don't know what they're doing and not, don't know what they're getting into, and that could be a real problem. So let's, if we could put a pin in that one and, and, you know, Scout House, Rio, Flanders and, and see how we're doing capacity. But when we come back in January for this kind of, same kind of a setting, let's, we'll, we'll make sure that we, we put an asterisk or put a pin in that one for, for discussion.
And Chip, one thing I was going to add, and you and I talked about this a little bit, and you know, just to kind of share with the council, if we can continue to refine this worksheet and these, this can be something that we can use as a city moving forward. This doesn't have to be a one-time X, this can be our tool to work together. We can, you know, refine some of the things that was great feedback about low, medium, high, what does that mean? Let's quantify that a little bit so we can continue to refine this sheet where it's something we can use in partnership with the council and public. This would be an annual thing we can do using a system like this.
Just like our, just like our five-year C I P.
I have a comment about that. You know, this, the sheet is entitled the city council strategic priorities. And I think that, you know, my, my preference would be for the city council to own the city council strategic priorities, not staff. And so we've had a discussion today about, you know, we sort of took the C I P stuff off the list, you know, and sort of, you know, we took that stuff off the list and we took the, this sort of wrote every year stuff off the list, you know, those are basic R F Ps, the pure serve stuff or some of the other stuff. But I think that the, you know, the stuff that's left, you know, I, I think that we own it, not staff. And, you know, I would ask, you know, the council to think about whether we should maintain the spreadsheet of the fifteen items that are left, not, or the twenty items that are left, not, not staff. I think there's some sort of stuff that goes on in the background and, and I would feel more comfortable if we had sort of a formal, a formal change review process led by one of us, not by, not by Chip.
I don't, I'm, I'm unclear.
Confused too. I mean, I, I understand what they are council priorities and we've set those priorities. I understand that. I'm just curious, is what you seem to, when you say own? I mean, I don't have a problem with them being ours and we, go ahead, but I hate to just have staff take their hands off it completely and we're responsible for implementing it, making sure it gets done.
Yeah, I think, I guess my, my concern, my little bit of my consternation is that it's not formal enough. Like it's not, you know, some of these things, you know, between the last time and this time, there was some stuff that got added to the spreadsheet, you know, some staff priorities, the hiring, hiring people got added to the spreadsheet. I don't think that, I don't feel like we, you know, the council, I think that the council on the spreadsheet, we would be, it would be more important to us. And, you know, if one of us, whether it was you, Dave, or whether it was the mayor pro temp or as one of the other three of us sort of was responsible for keep managing the spreadsheet and keeping it up to date and we altered it at public meetings, I think it would be more, it would be more real and would, you know, would have this sort of veneer of formality associated with it. And I think that that stuff means a lot.
Well, I think, you know, this is the third time we, we did this. We began the strategic planning in November of twenty nineteen, so almost two years ago. And then again, we came back and tuned that up in early twenty twenty, immediately prior to pandemic. And then we took a year off for obvious reasons during the pandemic until May. So, you know, I'm, 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 I hear what you're saying, I'm comfortable with that. The other mechanism for doing that, and it will, it will be, the reason I, I talk about the history, sir, is because we'll be more disciplined, Bob will be more disciplined about adding things to the list in future iterations. But what you can do as well to document it is to do it by a little, a little policy resolution at, at a council meeting. So it's locked in place and we've got a resolution that talks about your priorities. But this is the first time that you've delved this far in. Remember, you've got a vision statement and a mission statement and, and, and value drivers and the like. But this is the first time you've really delved in and prioritized a pretty long list of, of priorities. So I hear what you're saying and I think there's a way of doing that. Again, part discipline on our part, part documenting it through the resolution process at an open, open, open council meeting.
Okay, well, Jeff, I think we understand the point and I, I care where you're coming from. I do think we have to remember that we did take a year off here. And I, I'm a big strategic planning guy, I believe, and, you know, meetings like this being very productive, being the best use of our time. And as I said, when we started this meeting, we're all here for the same purpose. We're public servants, we're here to serve the public. Best way to do that is collaboratively and collegially. And if we have to have a little confrontation, there's nothing wrong with that at all. But frankly, I think today's been very productive. Want to thank you all for coming, especially the department heads. Thank you all. And as I said, there was no staff backing intended, just the intent that we go out and do the public's business the best we can. So thank you all. We stand adjourned.